Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, meeting of the Placerville City Council, their regular meeting. We have no closed session. Before I open the open session, though, I would like to recognize, and this is going to be hard for me, Lucas Shepard, one of our own, passed away very tragically a couple of weeks ago. He was a fire chief, he was fire suppression. Lucas and my daughter Eva were very good friends in high school, and Lucas was a regular fixture at our house for four years, and so we got to know him very well. And I don't want to overstate it, because there are people that did lose their own in this case, but losing Lucas was a little like losing one of our own. So I don't want to go on. Everybody grieves in their own fashion. I would like, though, that we take a minute of silence, not a minute, but a moment of silence to just remember Lucas. He was a good person, had his quirks, like we all do, good ones by and large, quick with a joke, always in a good mood, it seemed like, and even when times when I knew he wasn't in a good mood. And whenever you saw him, he always talked about what was going on, talked about his family, talked about his kids. We have lost a very, very good friend in Mr. Shepard, so if you would join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right, order. Let's pledge our allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Mayor Clarici.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gotberg.
Here.
Councilmember No.
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have a couple of ceremonial matters today, the first one being a proclamation of the city council recognizing the period of April through October 2025 as wildlife awareness season. And is there anybody here from the, anybody even remotely having to do with wildfires? Okay, fine. It's a lovely document. Hey, listen, we live in a fire-prone area. It gets dry around here, hot, dry, it's been like this for thousands of years, and it's getting worse, so don't, you know, be fire aware. If you have property, make sure it's cleaned up, make sure you're not doing crazy stuff like, you know, lighting things on fire where you shouldn't. It's very important, and we're going to get a, don't we get something about fire, something later on? Or no? Yeah, aren't we do, oh, we're doing the thing where we adopt the fire zones?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, okay. See, I don't even read the agendas anymore. Okay, anyway, anyway, I thought we were. Anyway, so it's wildfire, wildfire awareness, be aware, it's a bad thing, we don't want to start fires, we had the Caldores fire, all hell broke loose, it was awful. You saw what happened in L.A. Don't think because you live in a town you're safe from anything, the wind's blowing the wrong direction, and there could be no trees in sight, and your houses are fuel and everything burns. It's a, I used to fight forest fires when, believe it or not, when I was much younger. Scariest thing I ever saw in my life was a rip-roaring firefight. I've been in tornadoes, and earthquakes, and floods, and a wildfire was the scariest thing I ever saw in my life. So be aware of it. Our sec, yes?
We do have people from county, their wildfire office, Tonya Harding.
Oh, well, you did really, I asked.
She did.
Oh, you did? Well, you have to be more.
There may be a couple other people if you want to take comments on this, sorry.
When I get going, you can't stop me, so, well, then I will give this to you.
Yeah.
All right, anyway, it's a lovely proclamation, it has a bunch of wherethes in here, it's very nice, I guess I'll look at it. I didn't bring my glasses, folks, okay. Let's see, proclamation of the city council, the city of Placerville recognizing the period of April, April to October 2025 as wildlife awareness season, whereas Eldorado County has experienced large and destructive wildfires that have impacted the city of Placerville, evidenced by the mosquito, Caldores, King, and recently the Crozier Fire. And then there's a bunch of wherethes, I'm going to go, I'm going to go to the bottom, because there's a lot of wherethes. Whereas achieving wild, there's a bunch of things about wildfire goals, which you should, you should make your properties better, be cognizant of it, all that. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council, the city of Placerville declares the period of April through October 2025 as wildlife, wildlife, it could be, wildfire awareness season as a means for education and a call for residents, agencies, and organizations within the city of Placerville and Eldorado County to work together to be ready for wildfire. And I guess that's probably the biggest message coming out of it, is that, I know at the city here, we work with the county, our fire agencies all work together, we work with the state and federal organizations, all the fire agencies, everybody working together to help with this particular, very important thing. So, and then, and you can be part of that by being fire-wise, and like I said, maintaining your properties, and, and maybe helping a neighbor, you know, so you might have a neighbor, an older neighbor that can't help do stuff with their property, go over and lend them a hand, help them clean up things, trim up some brush and stuff like that. So, anyway, I will take this to you, since you are here.
Permission to approach. I do, I would like to share that county-wide messaging that will follow the proclamation being adopted by the county next week, all the agencies that are on the public outreach committee, which include, excuse me, I have a cough, it's lingering, it's terrible. The agencies that are on the public outreach committee include the county Office of Wildfire Preparedness and Resilience, as well as CAL FIRE, local fire districts, we have Forest Service, RCD, we have the Fire Safe Council, and we also have representation from the city now, which is amazing. So following the proclamation next week, there will be an intensive campaign by all the agencies that I listed, just showing, you know, educating the community on everything we can be doing together for wildfire preparedness, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. And when is our Saturday thing?
April 4th.
April 4th.
Is the event, correct?
Actually, April 26th is your Placerville Expo that's happening.
Right, oh, yes, I'm sorry, I was talking about, there's the proclamation.
Yes, Preparedness and Mitigation Roundtable and Press Conference taking place on April 4th.
April 4th, yes.
I was referring to the hoopla.
Yes, the 26th.
Up at the Midtown Mall.
That's on the 26th, correct.
Okay, on the 20, April 26th, from 10 to 2, if I remember correctly. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Does anybody from the public wish to comment about wildfire preparedness?
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville and member of the Fire Safe Council. And it's so important, because with the cuts in budget, and we may not get some of the things we were hoping to get in terms of fire breaks around Weber Creek for the city. So it's even more important for all of us to do what we can do on our own property and help our neighbors, and make sure that when the fire comes through, because it's not really if, it's when, that your home can survive. And if you do your defensible space, what people have found is when the wildfires do go through, there's these homes that didn't burn, and so people ask why? Because they had their defensible space, they had clearing around their home, so that there wasn't fuel next to their home, there wasn't fuel going straight up into the, to the eaves of their homes to carry the fire into the roof. And they had good, good defensible space and green and clean for the first 30 feet, and then 100 feet out, you want to have it so that it is fairly clean, four-inch double, it'll stay on the ground. If it's taller than that, it will go up. So, please, everybody, do your part.
Thank you, Sue. We could have mayors battling it out there.
Good evening, Placerville City Council. First of all, thank you for the recognition of Chief Shepard. It was, he was on the forefront of defensible space for Eldorado County, for the city of Placerville. He had extraordinary talents and was an incredible man, so terrible loss. Thank you for recognizing him tonight. As you noted, Mayor Clarici, the Caldores fire woke us all up, and all the little fires that we've had, as noted on that proclamation, we got darn lucky on those. And I'm very proud of Eldorado County and the city of Placerville and all the agencies and entities that are now coordinating to make sure that Eldorado County and the city of Placerville is as resilient and fire-safe as possible. It is so vitally important. And one of the incredible collaborative efforts that has come from this joint working together is through the Eldorado County Transportation Commission that did the Greater Fire, Greater Placerville Wildfire Preparedness Study, it's a long name, but so many of us served on that. And I know this is not on your agenda tonight, it's not a decision point before you, but it will be in the near future. I'm talking about the Clay Street Bridge. And under mitigation needs, that study notes that the Clay Street Bridge is an important mitigating factor for residents in the city of Placerville, and I think it's important to recognize that tonight. The study does say that the bridge can accommodate southbound residents that are evacuating out of Coleman, Clay Street, that area, there's a lot of residents there, it can accommodate southbound traffic. What it cannot accommodate at the same time are emergency personnel's coming into that residential area. We can't have it both ways with a bridge as it stands now. And so the current configuration of the Clay Street Bridge is dangerous to the residents of the city of Placerville, and I think that's important to recognize. And we have many vulnerable populations off of Clay Street. We have the senior apartments, and we have multifamily apartments, as well as the historic district up near Coleman with all the little, little houses and tiny little streets. In light of the wildfire safety awareness proclamation, I urge this council that whenever the Clay Street Bridge is before you in the months ahead, to continue to push boldly forward on that critical project to ensure the safety of the residents of the city of Placerville. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendy.
Isn't it always a little daunting to follow Wendy, who speaks so well? Marion Washburn, resident of Placerville. The proclamation prompted me to make a comment in that it struck me that the proclamations usually have to do with defined groups that are endeavoring to do worthy things, but this proclamation has to do with every single resident in Placerville and every single business owner in Placerville, because it involves the fire prevention. And it, as it is a little daunting also to recognize that maybe federal support for fire mitigation and prevention is going to be diminished, it doesn't mean that our own personal commitment to making our community as fire-resistant as possible goes away, that we should all put our foremost efforts into it. But at the same time, I think what is not necessarily recognized, but is true, that all residents expect the city and government to do their equal part when it comes to public properties. And what I'm thinking of is somewhat of an echo of Wendy's message, but in addition to that, as you know, there are a lot of streets that are fairly narrow in Placerville that have overhanging, arching tree branches with combustible foliage. And as a resident, I would expect the city to either deal with that physically or compel property owners if it is their responsibility, because if those things catch fire, then evacuation, safe evacuation is certainly prevented. And the other part of my message would be, as I said, an echo of Wendy's message, that the narrow streets that cannot accommodate both incoming emergency vehicles and outgoing evacuating residents need to be addressed. Clay Street Bridge would be one of those, but I know there are others. The other thing I would urge, it would be a controversial item, and that is elimination of the various fire gates that were erected as subdivisions went in over the years. We're facing a different reality during these years from when they were installed, and I think there could be a huge impediment to people trying to get out of neighborhoods if those gates are locked. And I know they have lock boxes, but I also know that when people are panicking, that dealing with a lock box is not necessarily realistic. So thank you for bringing up this message, and I have to quote one line from your proclamation, it said, "Hope is not a strategy." I think that's very apropos.
Thank you, Marion. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this particular item? All right, very good. Do we have any comments about wildfires?
Yeah, I just want to encourage citizens, if there are particular areas, to report that to staff so they can address them. I know Dennis Nishihara, new community director, has brought in Crowlersburg and CAL FIRE, and has been going all around our public property and really getting it knocked down this spring, so just a shout out to them, you'll notice in a lot of areas. Thanks.
3.2 is a proclamation of the city council declaring April 25th, 2025 as Natural Connections Day 2025. Okay, and I have a thing here. Proclamation of the city council, the city of, what I just said. Whereas, I'm going to read some of this, because this is really near and dear to my heart, I actually have a natural resources degree from the University of California Berkeley, go Bears, and from a long time ago, in forestry of all things. My natural resources degree has served me well in my life in a number of different areas, even at times when I didn't think it would. So whereas, Eldorado High School, go Cougars, Natural Resources Program is organizing a Natural Connections Day 2025 on April 25th, 2025. Whereas, the Natural Resources Program at Eldorado High School is a four-year program that promotes problem-solving, environmental stewardship, and community development. The program provides real-world work experience and curriculum designed to prepare students for college or entry-level employment in natural resource management fields and. Whereas, the goal of Natural Connections Day 2025 is to create a lively and educational day for 7th grade students of Eldorado County to learn about current issues in resources management through hands-on activities led by high school students and industry professionals. And whereas, current natural resource and medical arts high school students have designed and will lead stations for the 7th grade participants that include beekeeping, fire ecology, sustainable food production, water resources, alternative energy, aquaponics, forest management, wildlife biology, outdoor recreation, and wilderness first aid. Professional partners include the Resource Conservation District, U.S. Forest Service, CAL FIRE, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, American River Conservancy, Eldorado Irrigation District, Ag in the Classroom, Trout Unlimited, Sierra Wildlife Rescue, Folsom Lake College Department of Geosciences, and Eldorado Beekeepers. Now, therefore, I, John Clarici, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Placerville, state of California, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25th, 2025 as Natural Connections Day 2025. This is a great thing, you know, we spend, I shouldn't say, this is going to sound terrible, we spend too much time worrying about whether our kids are all going to become electrical engineers and stuff like that, and yet there's a lot of really good stuff out there that they can do, that's in these other fields, like in natural resources and biology and wildlife, that are really fulfilling. I've done it almost all my life, and I have used my education, I don't even do anything in the forest anymore, but I use my education in these fields every day. And so, kudos to them. Michelle, Ren, are you here? Oh, the students? Well, of course. Come on up, we're going to take a picture.
I just want to say, real quick, thank you so much for this, this means so much to all of us. My name is Isaac Gaoji, I'm a junior at Eldorado High School, this is my third year with the program, and Natural Connection Day means so much to me. We get to take all these little kids, and they get to experience what we get to do on a day-to-day basis, up at East Campus. And a little bit about East Campus, I'll tell you real quick, it means so much to me. I am the third generation of my family that's been able to go up there and work at it. My grandpa, David Gaoji, when he was a science teacher at Eldorado, he was able to teach kids himself up there when it was just Ponderado, or, sorry, one second, yeah, Ponderado. And then my dad, Tobias Gaoji, he's a science teacher, he created the program with Mr. Potter and Mr. Barnes. And when I was a little kid, I'd be able to go up to that campus, and I'd just be able to frolic around with the high schoolers and my other siblings. So that, or, so, East Campus means so much to me. It was, or, it was, we got the grant for Eldorado in 2008, when it was just a small little campus, and we've developed it so much since then. Now, it's a giant campus, and we're able to take up to three, sorry, 475 kids from several different schools, including Markham, Gold Trail, Camino, Sierra Ridge, CMP, and John Adams. We're able to teach them everything that we've been able to learn from our wonderful teachers. We're able, we're partnered with several amazing companies, such as California Department of Fish and Wildlife, United States Forest Service, Sierra Pacific Industries, Folsom Lake College, Geosciences, Eldorado, Eldorado Beekeepers, Trout Unlimited, American River Conservancy, and CAL FIRE, among others. This was a highly sought-after program that many middle schools are looking after. Our first year, back in 2008, when we first started, it wasn't at East Campus, unfortunately, but there was over 2,000 kids from elementary to middle school. And it was led by NR students and volunteers from the United States Forest Service. This is at Camino Forestry District Office, and from there, it moved to East Campus with NR, sorry, since NR, and it's been going on since 2008. The campus has been connected to ELDO since the 1920s, though, with Ponderado. Eventually, we had to limit it, so now it's only 475 students, but it's highly sought after by many, many middle schools, and we're lucky, and the ones that are able to come love it and enjoy it so very much. And we, our whole entire goal is, is in the name, Natural Connections. We're connecting the community with the natural environment that they have. And again, I just want to reiterate, thank you all so very much for having us and letting us have our special little day for the entire community. Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Hello, Placerville City Council. My name is Maggie McGay, I'm a junior and the president of Eldorado High School's Natural Resources Program. NR is the most spectacular opportunity that has been given to me at my three years at Eldorado. With the help of my peers and my always supportive teachers, I have met influential members of our community, learned real-world skills, such as fixing the chronically broken weed eater, and explored my passion, education. Natural Connections, a large-scale effort where NR students research and prepare activities and presentations on topics ranging from alternative energy to fire sciences, has given me the chance to fall in love with teaching kids the importance of protecting our world. This year, I look forward to leading a bug hotel activity with my classmates. We will be teaching our kiddos about native plants and their role in a healthy ecosystem through adding to a stacked pallet bug sanctuary, with drilling holes, rolling paper, planting natives and native flora, and digging in the mud. NatCon has taught me the value in getting kids outside. With colorful presentations and activities, we are not only enriching our audience, but also learning ourselves. Because of this program and Natural Connections Day, my passionate teachers, my inspired peers, I can promise there will always be members of our community, from all grade levels to adults, who see the value in learning about and loving our wild spaces and natural resources. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to reach, reach out to our community and connect further. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. All righty. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say about this day?
Ruth Michelson, great job you two. I'm very, very impressed, and I'm impressed with what you've done here. And I want to tell just a really quick personal story, that the first Earth Day was in 1970, and I was 14 years old, so figure my age, right, 68? But, oh, but what, young 68, right? That Earth Day made such a huge impression on me, it's a very impressionable age, so not only are these youth who are leading it, but the youth that they are mentoring. So, so much of life and life goals can be set at that very tender age. And then I went on to become an environmental engineer, so, and it all started when I was 14. So I can't emphasize enough how important, I think, programs like this are. We all want to do better for our earth and to leave a better place for our children, grandchildren, et cetera. So, good job, you guys.
Thank you, Ruth. Okay, all right, well, that seems to be it. Well, thank you very much. You know, you have young people like this coming and talking to you, it gives you a little faith that the future's in pretty good hands here, so very much kudos to all of you. Okay, there is no closed session report, because we did not have a closed session. Would someone like to adopt our agenda?
I'll move that we adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we have announcements, presentations to the public. Do we have any brief comments?
I have none at this time.
I have none?
I have none.
Wow. I'm not, I'm not going to even try. Okay, I have none too. Consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion, by roll call vote, unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. So, do we have any public, do any of you want to remove anything from this here consent? Okay, nope, okay, good. Do we have any public comments on our consent calendar? No, okay, great. What is the pleasure?
I will move the consent calendar.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gotberg.
Aye.
Mayor Clarici.
Aye.
All right. Public comment on non-agendized items, I repeat, non-agendized items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter, what did I say? Not on the agenda, that is, within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda, except by special action of the city council under very specified circumstances. I thought you were going to show me something. Okay. Missouri, the mayor reserves the I thought you were gonna show me something. Okay. Um, Missouri, the mayor reserves the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes, which I will. Um, and as I like to say, follow the golden rule. Don't say anything up there at that podium that you would not wanna have someone else say about you at the very same podium. So let's have some decorum out there, folks. Okay. I am opening it up now to oral communications. Ruth?
Okay, thank you, Ruth Michelson. One of our favorite topics, I want to talk to you about parking. And I'm, I'm speaking to you as a merchant. And this, uh, my issues started, my issue of concern started back in the holiday season, but continues to today. And that is the third floor of the parking structure. I've brought this up to a couple of you before, um, and I know what you told me to do about it, but I still wanna address the, the larger group. So in December and in November, if I would come into the parking structure, now I lease a spot on the third floor. But if I would come in and I'm going around the first and the second floor, I see that they're full. I see people circling, 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 and then exiting. And who knows? Do they give up? Do they go find another spot? Who knows? I feel like we've potentially lost a customer. Meanwhile, I go up to the third floor and there's 12 cars. There used to be a sign that said leased parking Monday through Friday. Somehow, that sign disappeared. I spoke to, actually Cleve about it, who told me, oh yeah, that was taken down because some merchants were worried they wouldn't get a spot on the weekend. Well, not really an issue. I mean, I'm sorry those merchants felt that way. Just this last weekend on Sunday, nice day, people are out, same situation. I go up, it was a Sunday at 1:00. I'm going to my third floor parking space and sure enough, there's nothing on the first or second floor. And there's only a dozen on the third floor. And I just say, could we do something simple like paint a green line around 15 spaces on the third floor and say, for leased spaces only, put that sign back up that says leased only Monday through Friday, and let us have more customer parking. We need it badly. All of us merchants are hurting. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Ruth.
I think other merchants agree with me.
Thank you, Ruth. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm, I'm Elena Tucker. I'm a business owner also on Main Street. And I just wanted to come up and, um, speak in favor or just, um, I'm in favor of what Ruth has just said. Um, we do have a serious parking problem, as you all know. And, um, I also have the same experiences going up to the third floor and finding it half-empty and people not finding parking spots elsewhere. So, um, there, there has to be some compromise that we can find about, um, allowing the public to park on the third floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Elena. Anyone else? Alrighty. Well, we'll bring that back. Um, we're gonna be talking about machines here pretty soon, aren't we? Parking, we're gonna, we're, something's gonna happen with parking, right? Or we've thought about it.
We're going to be installing new, uh, doors on the, on the actual pay station. So it's just an upgrade.
An upgrade.
An upgrade to what's already there?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
That'll happen probably in the next couple of months.
I'm wondering if maybe we wanna open parking con, you know, we've been, you know, it's been the same for a while.
Yeah, if, if you would like to, you can, uh, under future agenda, ask that we bring it back and we can give you some analysis on it.
Okay, that'd be good. Yeah, let's, let's think about doing that. All right. Thank you. All right. Seeing no one else up here, I'm going to close public comment. Do we have any written communication?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ordinances, continuation, what? Number nine. Items filled, but we didn't pull anything. Okay. Item number nine is items pulled from the consent calendar, which there weren't any. Item number 10, ordinances. 10.1, continuation of introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend the text of the City of Placerville City Ordinance, adding Chapter 30, Tobacco Retailers to Title V, Business Regulations, to regular retail of tobacco products and to establish a tobacco retail licensing program, and find the action is not a project within the meaning of the Public Resources Code, Section 2106.5, and Sequo Guidelines, Section 15378, and not subject to environmental review. Mr. Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Uh, this ordinance has been before you more than once. And at the last meeting on December 10th, 2024, uh, the city council gave staff some direction to make a few more amendments to the ordinance and propose some options for transfer, uh, of licenses. Uh, we also did a little research and as far as we can tell, it appears that there are 19, uh, tobacco retailers in the city of Placerville, um, which, you know, equals to about one retail, tobacco retail establishment per 560 residents, depending on which population estimate you use. Um, the list of tobacco retailers is here on page two of the staff report. Uh, we did send notice out to all of those retailers about the ordinance that's under consideration by the council. Uh, and then pursuant to your direction, from December 10th, the staff, uh, is presenting two options for, uh, allowing tobacco retailer license transfers. And option A is, again, starts on page two of the staff report, and that's, you know, that it can be transferred to family members. And there's a definition for family members. And, um, you know, as long as the license, licensee is in good standing and has to occur pretty quick. So that's option A. And then option B is, you know, allows a one-time-only basis, uh, transfer to another person or entity. So it's not predicated on, uh, fam- membership in the family. So you could, you know, if it's like, you know, um, 7-Eleven wants to sell it to Arco PM that, and transfer it, that could happen one time. And, uh, so that, I think that's the choice. It's presented as a choice in the ordinance. We left it in terms of, you know, track changes. So you can see there's two options there. Recommend picking one. And then the other substantive changes I would mention is that we changed, in the definition section, we changed business district to commercial zone district. It's just more in keeping with, uh, the terminology we use in the, uh, municipal code and the zoning ordinance, uh, particularly. Uh, the definition of proprietor was changed so that the ownership interest is deemed to exist when a person has, uh, greater than 50% interest in the stock assets or income of the business. And originally, it was proposed to be 10%, but that's gonna get really complicated to figure out who the owner is. There could be multiple 10% shares, all minority interests. It might be difficult to get things, um, settled. And then, uh, there's also, um, from council direction, there was a, um, section 5 dash 30 dash 7D3, uh, 6, or VI, uh, was changed so that a tobacco retailer in good standing, not in violation of any state or federal laws, uh, would be allowed to move to a new location, uh, within the same commercial zone district in town. And, um, so long as that new business, uh, floor space does not increase by more than 10%. And then the final substantive change was, and this again comes from council's, uh, direction from the December 10th meeting, was a, um, you know, a change to revocation of tobacco retailer's license uh, in the event or a finding of two or more violations of state or federal law. And that changed, as, as it was presented to you on December 10th, it was allowed was four more violations within any 60-month period. So it's, it's been tightened up to two or more violations. So, so that's pretty much it. That summarizes the substantive changes of the ordinance and, you know, here and there, little minor things, but this is the, the main stuff. And, um, there are some options here for you to consider. You could, um, send it back for more, um, more changes. Um, you could approve it, selecting option A or B, or just don't approve the ordinance. Those are your options for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any questions or comments?
Um, I just have a comment. Um, the county revisited their item this morning and I just wanted to share with the board, uh, that motion. Um, I think we've addressed most of these, um, but just wanted you, uh, to be able to see what the county was looking at and the issues they were doing, uh, that was sent to us, um, by some of our retailers. And to that point, you know, when people come up for public comment, if you could be very specific on how you want a part of the ordinance changed or your issue, that's always helpful when we're trying to, um, finish something. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Um, we will open this up to public comment. Remember, you have three minutes. How about it?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to state for the record that there were several items of written communication received on this item, um, about 12. Um, copies were printed and placed on the back table before the meeting. I'm not sure if there are any left, but, um, they are also posted on the city website under public comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Now, does anybody want to comment?
Hello there. Uh, my name is Mark Strau. Uh, we own the Arco AM PM here in Placerville. We were first informed of the ordinance, ordinance on March 17 when the, when a letter was sent out to us. We want to highlight three of the most impactful revisions we're proposing. One is grandfathered businesses to transfer their retailer tobacco license to new owners and family members. Second is carding every tobacco customer regardless of their age. And then the third, reducing tax dollars for the city of Placerville. And then, you know, I just, uh, was listening to those comments that we were talking about. You know, changing ownership within a 30-day period would be impossible. And so we need to think about extending that to a reasonable timeframe. Um, so, um, that's one of the pieces. And then the two or more violations in five-year period, that is very restrictive and, you know, makes me worry about that. We're, we do our best to not have any violations. We are, uh, going through, um, hoops to be able to make sure that we're passing stings all the time. And at some point, our luck runs out. And it might happen to us. So the fact that there's only two violations before we lose our license is really bad for us. Okay? So, um, the first thing that I was mentioning before, um, the ordinance requires any person who sells tobacco to, to obtain a tobacco retailer license. That means with the one per 2,500 residents, we're talking about only allowing four tobacco licenses. And we just heard that we have 10 tobacco licenses. So we're really talking about getting rid of tobacco in the city of Placerville. The, the next one is carding every person who, uh, buys tobacco. Um, I have firsthand experience that carding everyone hurts customer retention and does not allow for our teams to be focused on the proper age we need to be looking for when carding. We invest in the red card, green card program. We do that twice a month at every location that we have. We use BandiWorks that is a, a, uh, it, it provides data for us so we can see what our cashiers are doing to be able to correct bad behaviors. Um, and then, um, um, we have monthly training, no tolerance programs, and we do video reviews. So we're constantly watching our teams out there. It's important that we, um, focus on 35 and under. 35 and under is where we want our teams to be looking at to make sure that they actually can see where the problem people are, not carding maybe someone who has gray hair. Uh, third one is the, um, the city of Placerville raised their sales taxes in 2014. This has been a burden on gas stations and in essence, charging gas stations in the city an additional five cents more per gallon. By taking away the tobacco licenses, we're gonna be strained by additional burdens and bring even less tax dollars into the city. Please reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Before we go any further, we're, what is the limit on the number of these things that we have decided on? Cause it's not four.
Basically, it's, it's one per 2,500 population.
Well, that, that's the guideline.
Yeah.
Is that, but that's what we're working towards.
Correct.
Okay.
But we're not gonna revoke anybody's license now.
No, no one gets their license revoked today or with this. And you can continue your business as long as it's in continuous thing forever.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this subject?
Hi, my name is Matt Strau. I'm one of the co- co-owners of the Arco AM PM in Placerville. Um, we're not just retailers. We're responsible business owners who create jobs, support the local economy, and serve thousands of residents who rely on our stores. I understand that the goal of this ordinance is to prevent minors from accessing tobacco products, a goal that I fully in support. At our location, compliance is not just a policy, it is a core part of how we operate. We take this responsibility seriously because we recognize that selling tobacco is a privilege, not a right. However, this ordinance does not consider the commitment of businesses like ours, which have made significant investment to operate responsibly. It treats all retailers the same, failing to differentiate between gas stations that sell tobacco as one of many products versus smoke shops that dip, um, rely on tobacco sales and smoking paraphernalia. By doing so, it unfairly penalizes, uh, responsible operators like us while doing little to address the real issue of the illegal sales. In neighboring cities and counties like Rockland, policy, policymakers have taken a more balanced approach by allowing tobacco licenses to be transferable when tobacco sales are secondary to the main business, such as in a gas station versus which, with the, versus a smoke shop. These jurisdictions, jurisdictions have recognized the importance of distinguishing between responsible multi-product retailers like us and smoke shops. To address concerns about underage access while protecting legitimate business, they have defined tobacco retailers as sta- as establishments where tobacco sales account for more than 50% of the revenue versus one that is marketed as a smoke shop. By adopting this clear distinction, these communities have successfully upheld public health goals without unfairly devaluing longstanding businesses like ours. Also, the ABC has different types of licenses for different uses. Maybe this is something you could consider when differentiating between gas stations and smoke shops. If, if the one-time transferability provision stands, we risk being left with a business that low, no longer has any value in the marketplace. It will deter future investments in our community. The reason the sales tax went up is because they wanted to capture the revenue from the pass-through, who will now find another place to purchase, such as the casino gas stations. This will impact the sales tax revenue for the city. I respectfully urge this board to reconsider the one-time tra- transferability aspect of the ordinance and instead adopt a policy like neighboring counties where tobacco licenses can be transferred for businesses like ours. This will protect responsible retailers like us while still addressing the larger issue of illegal sales in smoke shops. We want to remain part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Good evening, city council. My name is Parmjit Kara. And I am a retailer in Placerville since 2002. I appreciate the opportunity to address this city council. We retailers are part of your community and want to support goals of health and safety. Also responsibly, continue to operate family-owned business. First of all, I wanna thank you for considering amendment to protect our local family business by choosing the option A, allowing transfer to immediate by choosing the option A, allowing transfer to immediate family members. We really appreciate. I just want to add a little bit into it. It'd be great if our kids want to join and we transfer to the neighbor in case that doesn't happen. Our whole life, we spend on this business and this can be our bread and butter, this is our retirement. And if this license is not transferred to new buyer, the value of this business is basically nothing. We're not going to be able to sell it. So I strongly request to make sure if we are in this business, we allow us to transfer to new ownership. We understand there's so many licenses in Placerville City. Lot of licenses happening in the last few years, lot of tobacco shops open. And this morning also in Elrond County meeting, this issue came, and we request over there to maybe we can have two separate, you know, we could be, you know, do a little bit separate with the tobacco shop and another convenience store and gas station. Because the gas station investment is way higher than just opening up a smoke shop. Smoke shop is just basically they sell tobacco only. And convenience store and gas station are, we selling lot of another stuff. So if we losing our part of tobacco, we just not losing only tobacco sale. We losing our another sales like beer, soda, gas, and another convenient items. So that is our main concern to please transfer license to the new buyer. And also since we, you know, notice we have so many licenses, so that might be help. A second and minor thing is mostly tobacco is a six-pack and five-packs, and we have a six-pack requirement, so maybe allow six to five packs. Thank you so much.
Good evening, I'm Eldon Price. I'm with Strau Companies. I'm their Director of Operations. I'm here to express my deepest concerns regarding the carding all ages. As a small business and responsible retailer for the last 35 years, these regulations will have a significant and detrimental impact on my employees' business operations, overall viability. Unfortunately, these changes will drive our customers to the next county over or any casino gas station where all products are still sold, severely affecting our revenue and our ability to operate. In regards to 100% carding property, we are very diligent at our processes and have worked on them and added many structures to them. We monitor them daily and we have a no tolerance policy that if you fail our policy one time through our video review, Bandi Works, green card, red card, it's an immediate termination. Because we want to be known as the example of responsible retailing. And we have secret shops, red card, green cards, store video reviews, we have analytics that are done daily on if we're being responsible retailers. Also regarding cigar pack size, there is no six-pack cigars available making compliance impossible without wiping out a significant portion of our inventory. As we've learned from the flavor ban, it resulted in a 25% drop in revenue and the product is still available at any casino gas station. So it just becomes a loss of customer revenue for us while the product remains readily available. These regulations not only affect small businesses, but also have broader impacts for the community. These restrictions on tobacco sales will likely drive the customers, as stated, to other counties or to the casino. Resusing local spending impacting overall economic health, this shift could lead to decrease in local tax revenue, which funds essential community services such as schools, health cares, and infrastructures. In summary, revenue lost. The new regulation will drive customers to neighboring counties or casino gas stations. Job loss. Small businesses may be forced to cut jobs or reduce employee hours due to decreased sales negatively impacting our local employment, reducing local spending as they travel to other counties. By considering these reg, reconsidering these regulations, you can support the local business, maintain economic stability, and ensure that public health measures are effective and balanced. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I look forward to your response. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I respect it, City Council members and staff. My name is Jesse, and my family is local business owner in Placerville area, who has been here over 20 years now. We have invested a lot into the city and residents over this time. My ask to the city is that Placerville should not rubber stamp this audience. Please take the time to understand the real-life impact on small businesses, families, and local economy. I agree 100% that there should be some repercussions for businesses breaking the rules. Let's find solution that protect youth, but also respect responsible businesses. The county is hit a pause on this morning on the similar audience because even they realized they hadn't looked into this issue deeply enough. Now it's on Placerville to do the due diligence and not rush into something that hurts small businesses without solving the real problem. The audience bans five-pack sale, but vendors don't even sell six-packs. This punishes retailers for something out of our control. It should be updated to five-packs. These rules are anti-small businesses. They lower the value of the businesses and hurt long-term planning, including retirement and estate transfers. It's overstepping state law. This goes behind already strict California state regulations, basically preventing most transfer of the tobacco license. This makes Placerville very unfriendly to the businesses and may cause the city to lose out on future investment from the business owners. Also, smoke shops and convenience stores are not the same. Gas stations, convenience stores, family-run convenience stores have been here for decades and follow the rules and shouldn't be punished in this case. There should be two license drives, one for the smoke shops and one for convenience and gas stations. And also since we have high, you know, rocket-high insurances for the businesses, and this another license fee is going to be also burdened more on the businesses. Thank you very much. Please consider on this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Speaking of my personal capacity, I have to confess that I don't like smoking, hate it, wouldn't mind if the fumes just blew away overnight, never came back. But at the same time, I have an equally strong distaste for wasteful spending, unnecessary regulations. I cannot figure out why anybody would want to do this when you've got plenty of laws already in the books, including stiff fines for selling tobacco products to children. We would have to be living in a cave to not notice that you already have problems with your limited staff and keeping track of ordinances you already have, whether it's signs or Airbnb or even parking lots like right across the street. For 10 years, you've had one over in the parking lot for the Chamber of Commerce. Hasn't been addressed because you have short staff. It just doesn't seem like you're looking at the right political tea leaves right now when the federal government is doing drastic cuts to cut back on regulation. Just seems like a very difficult thing to do. It also looks like protectionism because not, it was just your last session that you went to bat for the cannabis industry on sales tax. And these folks are all in competition with those cannabis stores because they sell the same products, not the cannabis, but you go into them as I have and you see row after row after row of all these bongs that are handmade glass. If they could make coffee out of them, I would probably buy one. So they're in direct competition, selling the same kind of products except for the cannabis. So it looks like it's anti-competitive. As far as the proliferation of these businesses, let's be capitalists and recognize they're not going to be around. I don't care how many you have now. Who says you're going to have that many next year or the year after? They're going to go down if there's not a demand. That's the way the free market works. And the way our sales tax revenues look like, you could use more revenue, not less. I'm also troubled because all those that I've met from smoke shops, English is a second language, it's Pashto, Punjabi, Urdu. It looks like the Yik Wu case of 1886. And that's not a very nice, maybe just appearance, but it doesn't look quite right when we demonize folks, talk about the proliferation, et cetera. I just think that we need to have competition, let the marketplace control. We don't need more regulation. For heaven's sakes, you don't seem to be able to handle what you've got now because you just don't have the resources with all the cutbacks. I'm going to uncharacteristically cut it short. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Mohamed Satar. First of all, thank you for giving us a chance, even at a very short time, you know, we received a letter like when our fellow business member mentioned just a week ago, we received this letter. I'm owner of shell at a Main Street. Imagine, I'm not going to go into detail. Everyone had given a very valid point, but remember, this is a bread and butter for us, and we abide by the laws. We have, I'm talking about our location since 2009, never had any violation, tobacco violation. We are really on top of training, monthly checkups, mystery shops and all that, and all these burdens that if you pass on, that, you know, if you sell a business, that, you know, you cannot transfer a license. Remember, I spent 15, 20 years in a business now, the time is coming to retire and I wanted to sell. So I mean, my whole investment, half of the investment is gone. So it's very sad, but I urge everyone to please think very wisely. And I really second all of my, you know, co-business people's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, sorry, first time I've ever done this. So basically, the way I look at this is basically like more taxes and a redundant level of licensing. So do they have to pay for that, like additional license, the one that's being proposed? So where's that going to? Is that going to quit smoking program? Is that going to addressing lung cancer? Or is that just going to the city coppers? I honestly don't know. I just want to, you know, back up you gentlemen here and kind of just support them, and I think I'm done. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. You did just fine. All right. Okay, we will bring it back. Questions, comments? Comments, questions? Go ahead.
I just want to correct one of the comments. You know, we had our police department doing those things and they were finding that they were being sold to underage kids and that they were selling products that weren't allowed to be sold in California. And there was basically nothing we could do, and that's why we're here today, because we couldn't do anything about those problems the way the laws and the ordinances are written. Yeah, I don't, I don't know, because my understanding is all those violations were on the smoke shops that moved into town and not our other businesses. And I'm just looking for clarification because that's my understanding.
There were sting operations and also convenience store type of settings. Settings, yeah.
And so we had.
Primarily the smoke shops, though.
But we had them across the board.
Correct.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to clarify, everyone to understand that it's really the underage sales that are going on and the products that aren't allowed to be sold in California that has really brought this to the surface for me that we need to do something about.
All right, well, I'll chime in real quick. Before we attempt to slap a bunch of lipstick on this, I'm going to make a motion that we select option number three, that we do not approve the ordinance at this time, and that we direct staff to no longer pursue a tobacco ordinance in the city of Placerville, that we rely on the myriad state and federal laws that are already policing this situation.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion. I will talk to my, or you want to make a?
No, 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 I just want to understand your motion. So if you move forward with that, that basically says we can't do anything about the problems that are happening and we.
No, I'm just saying that we're not going to pursue this tobacco ordinance at this time, that we direct staff not to pursue a tobacco ordinance in the city of Placerville. I'm not talking about enforcement or anything, specifically this ordinance.
But my understanding is we have to have the ordinance to be able to do the enforcement. That's why we're doing this. I mean, we're having underage sales, we're having illegal product sales, and I've been told that we can't do anything about that until we have an ordinance.
We can, we can enforce existing state and federal laws, so with respect to underage selling, things of that nature, yes, we can enforce that. This ordinance adds an additional layer. It does two things. One, additional restrictions on underage selling so that if you continue to violate it, you lose the privilege to sell tobacco products in the city of Placerville. Secondly, the other intended purpose is to have an overall reduction of tobacco licenses or establishments over the course of time through attrition. So those are the two-pronged purposes of this ordinance.
I would just like to add a great point about the licensing. That's the challenge that we run into. We can, we can do a sting operation on a location 20 times, have 20 violations, there's nothing within the provisions to pull their licensing to sell that product anymore. So, and then we have to hope that the district attorney's office will prosecute the case for underage sales. So having that local control gives us a little bit more flexibility on identifying repeat offenders and taking corrective action if needed.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, okay. I was just waiting for a minute. So I kind of dove in this, into this a little bit more reading through it. I mean, if you, basically, we're just trying to add a couple of things, and some of the things that we're trying to add, I think is a little erroneous towards our, basically towards our merchants. You start taking a look at, you know, the list of tobacco retailers that we have in town, it's basically, it's like 19. Half of those are our gas stations. Our gas stations alone, on average, 20 to 30% of their income come from tobacco sales. Now, you start taking that away by having special licenses when they want to go and sell a business, that's definitely going to hinder what their business is worth. You set it up to where you're only going to be having it that they can sign it over to family. If they don't have family that is going to sign it over to, we're just telling them now that, well, great, thanks, sorry, you know, good luck with selling your business. So I have a problem with that, especially in the industry that I'm in. Every business owner has the right to sell their business for what it's worth. And if you have a city telling a business owner that, we're sorry, your business license or your tobacco license isn't going to be transferable, so, you know, your business is worth 20 to 30% less now. I can't, I can't, I can't go with that. You start boiling down, let's see, the four in city limits? Okay. So say you get rid of all of the smoke shops but one, and you start, now you're down to a couple of gas stations and one convenience store? So that's, you know, you start looking at businesses that way, that eliminates a lot of business and a lot of tax revenue for this city. And I hate to say it, but tax revenue keeps the city alive, and right now, tax revenue is tough. And then, basically, when you start taking that stuff out of here, we're, we're just down to state law. So at that point, why are we trying to reinforce state law? So at this point, I'm not quite sure I can, I can move forward with this either.
Okay. When I first thought of this thing, when I first thought of this thing, I was just like, it seemed like there were smoke shops kind of pop, but they all kind of came at once. It was like within six months, it was like four or five more. And I was like going, huh, that's interesting. I wonder what that's about. I wonder, it got me thinking, is there any kind of regulation on this at all? I know that with liquor licenses, there's R, you, you know, there's formulas and stuff, and they don't hand out liquor license to everybody. And so that's really what started it. I don't think we should go to four. I was happy if we just kind of maintained the level that we have, you know, just sort of like put a cap on it and say, no more of these things, like we have however many, 19. There won't be a 20th. I was fine with that. I don't know how this other thing, I shouldn't say that because that throws staff into the bus. I'm sure they were listening to us and. I'm sure they were listening to us, and this is what they came up with. I'm okay with the cap not having that. If you own a convenience store slash gas station, and you want to sell your business, and you, you have a license to sell alcohol, correct? Do you just get to sell that to anybody you want? Or if you want to sell your business, it's under the caveat that that person, whoever they are, has to qualify to buy your liquor license? Right. So why is a tobacco license different? If there were to be one, why is it different? We're just saying, the rules that are applied to alcohol can be applied to, or, yeah, to tobacco. The person would still have to be a member in good standing, they can't violate, they couldn't have anything in their record, and then you could transfer it. So, you know, this sort of thing out there that this is going to, because if that's the case, and so a third of your business is tobacco, I'm, I'll assume the other third might be alcohol, beer and whatever, well, if somebody wants to buy your business, and they say, I can't qualify, that doesn't reduce the value of the business, it just means you have to find somebody who actually qualifies to buy the business.
No, but the way our ordinance is reading is, unless you're transferring it over to a family
No, no, I don't like
It's starting to reduce
I don't like the blood lineage
Yeah, so it's
Okay, I prefer
But still, with that point of trying to go to, like, you know, leaving the nineteen is fine, but, you know, when you're trying to reduce down to the four
Well, no, no, that was
Whatever it is for population, then you start having that issue, because now you're like, okay, well, wait a minute
Right, and there would come a point
We can't sell it, yeah.
Well, you could, I mean
Because the way the ordinance is reading, it's, it's, it's not necessarily for any Joe Blow coming along that can qualify to buy it.
Right.
Even the least restrictive option here only allows them to sell at one time, ever, ever.
We can change all those things.
Yeah.
We can write this the way we want it. I mean, I really want to find a way to, where we really punish those people who are selling to underage people, that there's going to be no tolerance for this, that you're gonna, you know, you're gonna get a revoke, and then you're gonna lose your license if you keep selling to underage kids. There's no reason to keep doing that, and that's what I'm looking for in this license. I can be flexible on the rest of these things, and can we write it in a way that, that we all, you know, approve there?
So I'm going to chime in here. I think people know I've had reservations about a tobacco retail ordinance since we first discussed directing staff to develop one. You know, I think people should be able to free, to make decisions about their own health and bodies without interference from the government, and I think businesses should be able to sell legal tobacco products. So if it's legal by the state and the federal government, it's good by me. I don't want to be putting in restrictions in place that go above and beyond what's prohibited under state and federal law. I don't have a problem with having a licensing requirement as a means to enforce, another enforcement mechanism against bad actors that are breaking the federal and state laws. So I think I've said that before. If this is not limiting the number of businesses, it's not limiting the transfer, we're getting rid of things like the pack size, we're getting rid of, I think, the single-use cigarettes, like, all of the things that go above and beyond state and federal regulations as they exist today, and the number of businesses that we're going to allow to have licenses, and we're just saying, you have to, you have to get a business license. If you break the law and you get caught for it, you're going to get these penalties, and you're going to lose your license. I am, I'm okay with that, and I actually marked up all the things that we need to change in here to make that happen, if anybody wants me to go through that. I seconded because he made a motion, and I wanted to have a discussion, and so, you know, I think that's just, I'll put it there, because I have it like line by line on where I think things would have to change to get to a point where this is just a licensing without any other, like, limits on numbers or transfers, or stuff that goes above and beyond what's already prohibited under state and federal law.
I'm good with that. I just, I want to bring our local control, that so we don't have to keep doing these things, and then depend on the DA to prosecute, and we don't have that enforcement in our, in our own jurisdiction where we can't stop underage selling and products that shouldn't be sold.
I can amend my motion to direct staff to bring back to us solely a licensing component that would allow us some enforcement action without any of the other onerous regulations that are currently in this ordinance, and just direct staff to bring back a licensing component only, then we can talk about that section of things later.
I'll second the revision, or whatever we're calling it. Can I, can I then just walk through what these are?
Not yet.
No? Okay.
You know, I am a civil libertarian, I believe that you should be able to destroy your body if that's what you want to do. If this is just about that, and we didn't have all these other components, the one thing about the single-use ones, you know, we catch hell from the dump on the batteries, because they use them, they got these little batteries, they throw them away. They were also trash, you'd be amazed at how many of these things end up out in the general public. They're like cigarette butts, you know? Not having those, I think, is not a transgression against humanity, and I think that if you said, you know, don't sell those, sell the, you know, I, I, never mind. You know, you get the multiple-use ones, you recharge them, you get the little canisters, those apparently, at least from what we've told, been heard from waste management, or waste connections, is less impactful on their landfill type of things. And these folks could sell them. I mean, they're an addictive product, they're going to sell them anyway. I mean, the people, you know, it's addictive, it's harmful, and they target, not these people, these people just sell product, and don't get me wrong. The industry targets children. Now, that doesn't make us the police of all those things. But if this is just about not caring, then I don't think we need an ordinance at all. He can go out and prosecute all sorts of other crimes and not miss a beat. I wouldn't even bother. I would suggest that we not have anything come back, and we'll be the laissez-faire city, and that'll be fine.
So I am also okay with not having an ordinance at all, as I think
That's fine, I understand.
So I'm trying to
Yeah.
Listen to the folks up here. I've got one person who really wants licenses over here, so I'm trying to
Well, I want to control a problem we have. You know, we have a certain population in the audience, we've previously had the educators and the other people who came and spoke to us, you know, who aren't here tonight, who are on the other side, who thought it was moving forward. So I'm looking at both sides, and I really think the issue is the underage selling, that what we have isn't working, because people are doing it, they're repeatedly doing it, and, oh, well, you catch me, I'll pay a fine or do whatever, but I'm not going to worry about it, and that's unacceptable to me. And that's, you know, really where I am, and we also have had products that are competing with our cannabis stores that aren't supposed to be competing, because they're selling things that they aren't supposed to be selling in California. And kids, we've caught them, you know, kids being able to get a hold of things they shouldn't be able to get a hold of, because we don't have the smoke shops, and apparently, some of the other ones are not responsible. I think we need to do something about that, and that's, that's my main point with all that. I don't think we're responsible legislators if we don't, if we just turn our face to these problems we know we're having.
To add a little bit of information, the legislature did adopt a piece of legislation effective this year, SB 1230, effective, it was adopted last year, effective now, but it was designed to increase the penalties for selling to minors, and it provides local agencies additional code enforcement authority. So the types of fines that we now have the ability to impose on selling to underage include a thousand dollars to fifteen hundred for the first violation, two thousand to three thousand for the second violation at the same location within a five-year period, five thousand to ten thousand dollars for the third violation at the same location within a five-year period, so on and so forth. And when it happens more than once, we can inform the Board of Equalization. After the second one, the Board of Equalization can impose suspensions, a forty-five-day suspension for the license as soon as the third violation occurs within a five-year period, a ninety-day suspension for the license for a fourth violation within a five-year period, and then for the fifth violation, revocation. So there, there are increased abilities, but this does not reflect what, of course, the ordinance before you.
Right, and that requires us to be very diligent about
Yes.
The policing and go through a whole bureaucracy process to stop those bad actors, whereas we have the ability to be more proactive and just say, hey, don't do this, or you're not going to keep your license.
Right, and we would have to affirmatively contact the state to have them revoke the license.
Yeah, it would be quite a process, and a lot of our staff time.
I'm going to say, all the items in here I would want to remove to be willing to move forward with it, so that folks know that position. The first one would be Section 5-30-5, sale of single-use electronic cigarettes, item A. So that is the prohibition on the single-use electronic cigarettes. I'm okay with the second part on the non-FDA authorized, because I think that's a, you know, FDA is health, and I'm totally fine with saying that part needs to stay. Under Section 5-30-6, I would want to remove item D, which is the package size restrictions, so that's the six cigars and the twenty little cigars provision. Under item 5-30-7, I would want to remove item D, excessive density, so that is the limit on the one retailer per twenty-five, or two thousand five hundred inhabitants of the city. Keep going here. Under Section 5-30-11, license non-transferable, I would instead want to change this into essentially license transferable, and go with option B, removing the one-time restriction. So rather than saying a tobacco realtor's license may be transferred one time, basically just say, it may be transferred to a person or entity after the effective date of this ordinance. And I believe those were all of the items that relate, the rest is all the fines, fines and the penalties and all of that if you do not comply. So I am fine with that part.
So these guys will have to card everybody?
Yes, I still, I have not removed the carding requirement.
Have to card requirement? What else? Well, it seems unfairly unburdened to them, it seems like a terrible burden to them that they would have to card everybody. They've told you, they've told you how much this is a burden on them. Why isn't that an issue? Why isn't that burden an issue for them?
I'm fine with removing that, but I think that's part of the law on enforcement of the underage and the state law, so I'm okay with keeping it.
But it's not two events, is it, at the state level? How many times can you sell to a minor before someone will dump on you? Real quick. How many? How many times?
Five.
Five. Five times.
And all the paperwork to go with it.
Yeah, five times. Okay. I don't really care, I don't smoke. I don't, I really, I care about the subject matter in the sense I've known people that have smoked. I know no part-time smokers, I know some part-time drinkers. I've seen real bad lungers. They all started when they were kids, for the most part, and I'm sure there was a discussion like this sometime back forty years ago. So, can I get single-use things put back in? You're running this show, you tell me.
I have no interest in adding that back to my motion.
Okay, great, all right. Did you amend your motion to all her things?
No, I, currently on the table, and my motion is that we direct staff to bring back a licensing component only, to comply with the new state law that Mona read to us to more
But that's not what you said.
You accepted my amendment.
I seconded his motion.
Right.
I don't have to agree to it, it is not what I just read.
She revised
Going with my discussion.
I'm confused about the motions, I guess.
Well, no, he said number three, that's pretty straightforward, so number three is on the table.
Actually, I've kind of, just a couple of quick questions.
Okay.
I know you guys are going through this, and I'm agreeing, but this is probably going to be directed at Mona. So if we have repeat offenders, don't we have nuisance laws on the books that we can go after them for that?
The nuisance laws are a little bit differently than the suspension and revocation of a business license, which does include due process rights and obligations, so we would have to articulate the steps for that.
Okay. And then we're, we're setting this ordinance forward to basically give us the ability to take away their tobacco licensing, okay?
If they sell to minors or products that they're not allowed to sell.
Then why not just write an ordinance that if they violate X amount of times, they lose their business license? They can't sell tobacco without a business license.
I'm sorry. No, no.
Does that, does that not make sense?
No, no, I mean, that's, that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for us to be able to control this locally, not to have to go to the DA and the state and everything, that if you're going to sell to minors, and you're going to sell products you shouldn't sell, then we're going to yank your license, and here's your, you know, two-strike thing, and I'm fine if that's all it says.
So I'm, that's, it's just a question. I mean, if we're going through this whole process to make a tobacco licensing, well, why even go through the process of a tobacco license if we just get to a point of writing an ordinance that says, if you violate any of these state laws, X amount of times in our city, you lose your business license to operate?
So if a retailer has tobacco as a secondary use, by way of example, then under your scenario, they wouldn't be allowed to operate any component of their business, they would lose that entire license. So the gas station would not be able to operate, you know, the, the other retailer selling other products would not be able to operate.
Well, I mean, it sounds like the conversation is, you know, some part of this is they're looking for max penalty for doing this. I mean, what better deterrent than to lose your business if you do this? I mean, is that too harsh? You know? So are we just breaking things down to make things feel better?
Well, I mean, you can lose your, your tobacco license if you do those things. I mean, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay. And then, at what point do we stop making the merchants who sell products that we, as adults, are allowed to buy because we have the choice? At what point does it become, you know, teach your kids to do better?
There's, there's a conversation.
Yeah, right. So, anyway, yeah, okay, I just wanted those couple of questions answered.
If I can just make one other, so I'm hearing from, we do have a motion on the table that's been seconded. The motion is to not take any action on the ordinances presented before you, but to direct staff to come back at a future time, drafting an ordinance that complies with state and federal law, that includes the enforcement and licensing provisions, and that may address, at least councilmember knows, concern about local ability to regulate. So I want you all to kind of just be aware of what's presented.
Would an ordinance be required to establish a local licensing component in our, in the city?
So the local ordinance would then allow the city to rescind and revoke or suspend a license without having to go to the Board of Equalization.
And that's not what, I don't, so, yeah, my motion is, my motion is to completely disapprove, to not approve this ordinance at all. And then I was offering that as the licensure component, as kind of a, you know, an offer to try and make Jackie more, I'm sorry, Councilmember No, more comfortable with it. Honestly, my inclination is to direct staff to completely no longer pursue a tobacco ordinance in the city. That offer was just to make you more comfortable with, with that situation. If an ordinance is required in order to add a licensure component, then I would honestly just remove that. I don't, I don't want to add burden to staff, I don't want to add burden to business. We have no business as a city telling people who they can sell their businesses to, or who they can't sell them to. And so, yeah, my motion currently is just to bring back options for a licensure program locally, so we have some more enforcement capabilities. If that is required to have an ordinance, and that, then we can discuss it at that time, but this current ordinance goes away completely. That's my, that's my current motion.
I think I'm confused, so I apologize. I understand you're, the first part of not moving forward with this, the second part with direction, I'm, I'm not understanding. What is it that you want licensed?
Let me, let me try, I think what you're saying is, your question was, does it take an ordinance to require a licensing program?
Correct.
Yes, I believe it does.
Okay.
For us to have our own licensing program, it would require an ordinance to do that. And so I think what your motion was, would bring that back, but just the licensing component.
I did not realize that, I thought it would be easier. I don't have any interest in getting down this road again. getting down this road again. So I, I don't know how I would amend my motion again. But honestly, my, my first motion was just to option number three.
But Nicole, it's my question. Did Nicole's, all Nicole's proposed things address your issues?
No, no, they don't.
He doesn't want it.
I, I don't want any of this. We can do a second motion and that's fine, but the motion on the table is to trash this entire ordinance and direct staff to no longer pursue a tobacco ordinance.
So do you want to sort of amend the, the part about directing staff?
I did not realize that it involved drafting another ordinance.
I just want, I just want clarity. Are you back to basically the original thing? Item three, we do not.
Yeah, after staff's clarification, I, I would like to make the original motion. I apologize. I did not realize it would take a whole nother ordinance to do that.
I didn't think you had changed anything.
I, I offered.
Well, he put direction to staff to develop a licensing program.
And that's what you seconded.
And then she accepted my amendment.
I accepted as amended. I'm fine with your origi, I, yeah.
Yeah, my original motion is just option number three.
No amendment.
With no amendment, direct staff to no longer pursue a tobacco ordinance in the city of Placerville. That's my motion.
All right, that's it. Done? She seconded it.
I seconded it. I'm, you're good. Yeah. I'm seconded both of yours. So we're back to the original. I'm still seconding.
All right. Call or roll?
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
No.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gotberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Since most of you really probably don't care, you should care about the rest of the agenda because it is something. I'm going to give everybody five minutes to get up and go because I'm sure you don't want to hear about the rest of what we do here in the great city of Placerville.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to be pragmatic. You know me. Yeah, no, 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 you think.
We move it. Okay, can I get a motion for a continuance?
I will move that we continue this item to our date certain of April eighth.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call? Yeah, sure. What the hell? Roll call.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Twelve. Item number twelve. This guy. Discussion slash action items. Twelve point one, acknowledge and file the fiscal year 2024-2025 mid-year budget report as presented. Mr. Warren.
Good evening, Mayor Clarici, members of the council. So tonight, report is to answer two primary questions. One, how is the local economy doing? And two, how is the city living within its means? And we'll evaluate the general fund as well as your other operating funds. Jumping right into regional unemployment rates, which variated throughout the 12-month period in 2024. Not much change. It did decrease slightly across all sectors within the region. Plasterville actually outperformed all the other regional competitors. Went from 4.1% down to 3.5 as of December, so that's great performance. Then historically, you can see that since the pandemic, Plasterville has performed very well as far as unemployment rates. Looking at your residential real estate. At seven out of 12 months, it actually, volume was higher than the previous year. It went pretty flat last year. It's still not real robust, but overall, it was up by seven units compared to 2023. When you look at the pricing, it was actually down eight months out of 12 months in the Plasterville region. So it's starting to become, you could say, kind of more of a buyer's market, but prices are still relatively high. They're holding, but things are slowing down a bit. And then we talk a lot about inflation, you know, the prices of goods and services. Since 2021, we've had significant inflation. Things have started to cool down. However, there's no relief to the consumer. It's just, it's slowing, it's, it's growing at a slower rate. So. Next, we have the recreation program attendance. It'll hand it over to Director Nish Harra to go through those.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. As, as you notice, and I'll touch briefly on a few programs, our, our aquatics numbers specifically for July and August. It doesn't necessarily indicate all of our June numbers. I know I shared at a previous council meeting around some of the specific numbers. We do have a seasonal trend in a lot of our programming, especially during the summertime. We can skip to the next slide. But I will highlight a couple of things in regards to some of our tracking and a few things that we've started, started to identify. More specifically, in our youth basketball numbers, and there's a little bit of a correction there for the final total. For the city internal participants, we had 717 participants, and we actually partner with Georgetown Recreation District. And they actually, they, they bring a number of teams, actually 16 teams for 145 total. So we had 91 youth basketball teams this year for a total of 862 participants. And that's kind of the summary of our enrollment chart for our programs.
Thanks, Dennis. Moving on to building division revenues, interim director Cahill will go through the building division revenues for us.
Thank you, Dave. Mayor and members of the council, I would say, you know, just to sum this up, there's three main drivers to building permit revenue at this time. There's three major developments. There's the Mallard and Middletown Apartments. Mallard is 72 units. Middletown is 82 units. There's also a single-family home development known as Sutter Ridge. There's 39 units there. So those permits are coming in or will be coming in over the next probably year and a half or so. Some have already been in. So those are, those are the key drivers in terms of the statistics you see. And, you know, we do have, point out that the building official is here this evening. So if you had in-depth, detailed questions asked, we could provide more, a little more, higher level of detail if, at your request. Thank you.
There are several slides with graphs, with data. They're pretty much self-explanatory, but if the council has any questions, please let us know. And moving on to slide 16, we have your encroachment permits out of the engineering department. And city engineer Savage will review those for you.
Thanks, Dave. Yeah, this year, we, I guess in 2024, we did see an increase in encroachment permits. That's primarily due to a lot of PG&E electric system hardening work that has been happening around Plasterville. And we expect that trend to continue into 2025. And then on the transportation permit side of things, that's a little bit less predictable, but pretty steady in a normal range of what we expect for transportation permits each year.
Thanks, Melissa. All right, moving on to our Bradley Burn sales tax, which is your general fund sales tax. It represents one percentage point of the 8.25%. It's your most significant local economic indicator, making up 57% of your general fund. The city continues to have strong per capita sales tax. In 2023, we're $604 per person. We were number 37 out of 539 agencies, and we hope to be number one someday. The quarter ending, and you've seen this number before, in September 2024, our first quarter for the fiscal year, we were actually down by 146,000 or 8.8% on the cash basis, which also included prior period adjustments or back taxes. When you remove the back taxes, it actually ends up being about a $42,000 decrease or 2.6%. We weren't alone. The county also had a decline of 3.7% for the third quarter, state down 2.3%. And then as far as the contributors to your sales tax, this allocation is about the same when you compare, even though we've had some business closures and openings. The proportional share, you can see state, county pool, that's online sales tax primarily. Autos transportation, 25%, building construction, 17.96%. The rest, you can see they're smaller sectors. And then we appreciate all of our businesses in the city, especially our top 25 sales tax generators that are listed here. And then looking at the variance for the third quarter, you can see that what made up that decrease. You can see autos transportation down 2.96%, building construction up by a little over 1%. Business industries down 18%, and then food and drugs down 7.4. Winners and losers after that, but those are the primary contributors to the 2.6% decline. And then over the past two years, we've had unfortunately declines in sales tax. Again, slowing economy, the money that we got from COVID, that's kind of wearing out. And we've had some business closures, but we've had some business openings too. So those things are going to help us get through this. So in total, actual sales tax for 23, 24 totaled a little over 6.2 million. We forecast in 24, 25 slightly lower, 6,330,000, so down about 234,000 or 3.74% year over year, based on HDL's forecast. Looking at your budget, the budget you adopted back in June of '24 totaled 24,682,058. The general fund portion was 11,000, 11,302,762. It was a tough budget. As you recall, we ended up having to freeze five positions. One of those positions was unfrozen. There was no contingency, no contributions to capital outlay, equipment, or projects. So in December, you may recall that we had about $770,000 in ARPA funds that we had to demonstrate being encumbered, or we would lose it to the federal government. So the council took action and essentially encumbered or expended the $770,000 on police patrol division personnel costs. That freed up $770,000 of general fund revenues for those things we set aside in ARPA, like $600,000 for your courtyard, $81,000 for CIP and equipment. And then we established through interest earned on the ARPA fund, $88,000 contingency for unforeseen expenditures, which we didn't have before because the budget was so tight. So that was great. And then we budgeted $49,000 for the historic City Hall stabilization project, to continue that project at Historic City Hall. Looking at your budget, I'm not going to go through all the numbers, but for each general fund budget, this is what it looks like. And then proportionally, when you look at your revenues versus expenditures, you can see sales tax, which is 59%. When you compare it, say, to community services and police, it's proportionally about the same. And then historically, your revenues versus expenditures, you can see between 21, 2021 and 2023, we had a great run. We actually did very well during the pandemic. We took some of those net revenues and then used them in '23, '24 as a planned deficit, paying down your unfunded pension liability and doing some projects and buying some equipment. And then we're showing that $770,000 surplus in '24, '25, which we plan on spending on the things we talked about earlier. So. And then your budget, your revised budget revenue for general fund, 11,302,000, forecast 11,48, down about 254,000. That's primarily because of sales tax being down about 2.25% overall. Expenditures, 10,58, 59,845, forecast 9,760,83. So although revenues are down, so are expenditures based on our forecast, which is great, down about 2.98%. And then transfers out, net, we're actually seeing that increase by $120,000. That's primarily because of anticipated general liability claim costs. And also the county informed us that our animal services costs are going up by about $39,000 unexpectedly this, this year, based on their forecast. So. So in the end, the forecast, we're looking at about a $645,000 surplus. However, we have to account for what we plan for with our ARPA funds. Thank you. So when you reduce it by that, it's about $125,000 deficit. So that comes out of your fund balance in order to afford that full 770,000. Looking at the revenue side of the ledger, again, sales tax, when you look at our budget over forecast, it's $442,000 less or 6.83%. All of the taxes that your business license, TOT, franchise taxes, your real estate transfer taxes, cannabis tax, slightly below at $52,571. Construction permits, Mr. Cahill tells me that we're actually going to exceed budget by $138,000 based on those three major projects we have. So that's up by 76%. That's great. Intergovernmental revenue is your property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees up by 16,000. Charges for services are anything from planning, recreation parks, any, any kind of fee you can think of, engineering. And actually, that increase is primarily due to engineering fees being much higher due to development, 2.18%. Fines and forfeitures up slightly, 27,000. That's because of vehicle abatement, use of property. We're doing well with life, up by 45%. Other financing sources is just overhead to your water and sewer funds. So again, revenues are down 254,000 or 2.2, 2.5%. Then looking at your expenditures, we see slight variances by department. The one I want to point to is the non-departmental at the very bottom. You can see the $180,000 greater. And again, that's because of general liability claims, anticipated expenditures through June 30th, as well as animal services coming in $39,000 higher than what we were told earlier last year. So down by $178,000. So our forecasts assume pay-as-you-go for Gatsby 75, other post-employment benefits. That's basically retiree medical. We don't pre-fund. We just pay what the premiums are. We assume expanding the entire $88,000 contingency. We assume personal salary and benefit commitments are included. So what, what you approved and what was reported out at your last council meeting is included in this. And then the $75,000 increase in forecasted deficit is primarily due to the $442,000 shortfall in sales tax. Then looking at water, water's pretty much flat. That's kind of a bad pun, but it's, your surplus is slightly lower, about $24,000 there, but overall, good news. Sewer, I jumped ahead, great news because of, of sewer impact fees. Carl's graphs kind of reflect this, but we have about $755,000 in additional sewer impact fees we didn't anticipate in the budget. So that's shoring it up by about 11.63%. So instead of an $861,000 surplus, you have a 2.2 million, and that goes right into your CIP. I know Ms. Savage loves that for sewer projects. So we've got plenty of needs. Non-major funds, these are your smaller funds, really no comments there. They're all doing fairly well. And then total, your operating budget revenues, 28,563,223. Revised budget forecast 29,461,236, or difference of 898,000 to the good, about 3.14%. Then expenditures, slightly less, from 24.7 million to 24, just, just, just above 24 million. So about 724,000 or 2.92% less. So in the end, what we're forecasting is 5.4 million, and that's before commitment. So you did commit most of those revenues to CIP projects, but we do have some additional funds we anticipate in your sewer enterprise fund, your Measure L fund and your Measure H fund. So. That's that. And then just closing comments that although the local economy shows signs of cooling, new business activity, you know, we have some new businesses. O'Reilly Auto Parts, Desi's Pizza Bites, second grocery outlet, those things will help, as well as the CIP projects. We're going to be doing some major CIP projects coming up over the next year. City council management continue to operate the city in a prudent and responsible manner. We anticipate year-end operating revenues to exceed operating expenditures for most funds. Staff will provide an additional update at your budget workshop scheduled. We tentatively have it at April 24th, but I know we're looking at some other dates. So that's a little fluid and possibly on May 8th. So later in April, early May, we'll be meeting to go through your budget. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Warren on the budget update? Besides, thank you very much. Okay, do we have any public comment on our budget? Thank you very much. We'll bring it back here. Okay, well, thank you. We received it. We filed it. Great. All right, item 12.2, consider a letter of support for a grant application to support New Gallery Art on Center. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First of all, I believe you have a new staff report. Hopefully, you got that tonight where I apologize for not correcting when I copied over from another staff report. But so you have the, the correct recommendation and purpose in the new staff report. But this item was requested by a new group, the Art on Center, which is the small gallery across from City Hall on Center Street. They're trying to get that opened back up, is my understanding, and they're requesting your support in form of a letter for a grant application to the T-Mobile Hometown Grant. And so you have all the information here. Again, it's to open up that, that center, that art center. It talks about what they plan to do in there. And you do have representatives here tonight, Linda Vasquez and James Marquez are both here to answer any questions you might have on it. So.
Seems fairly straightforward, but do we have any questions or comments? All right. Would anybody like to comment on this? You don't, you don't have to, but you can. I, I, it looks pretty straightforward to me. All right. This, you see, this is, it's easy. Okay, we're going to bring it back.
I'll go ahead and move staff's recommendation to approve the letter.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Go forth. I, oh, I'll sign the letter. I'll have it for you here soon. Okay. To item 12.3, consider approving downtown street closures from Sacramento Street to Bedford Avenue for permitted 2025 special events. Mr. Nishi Harra.
Thank you, Mayor Clarici, council members. Tonight before you, Department of Community Services requesting your approval for eight downtown street closures for the year of 2025. And if I could share a little story and daydream for a little bit back to the summer of '24 and all of the hard work our community members and business members had engaged in, into really trying to hone in and be responsible with how many times we're impacting downtown. And I will say this, and I'm very, very grateful for all the hard work and effort not only our staff, but our community members and our business owners have done over the last few months. With, with that said, I do have a few corrections. I guess something was in the water with a few of our typos and errors this week. But I want to bring your attention to the schedule of events that was part of the attachment in regards to the eight closures that we had approved previously in a city council meeting. The Hangtown AM Car Show is actually on May 18th. The Hangtown PM Car Show is on August 24th. And as much as I'm sure Mr. Tony Wendell would like to help out with Sugar Skull, he is actually not in charge of Sugar Skull or the primary contact. It is Ms. Brenda Quintana. So there's a few grammatical and clerical errors I wanted to bring your attention to. There are copies in the back of the room if people are interested in kind of taking a look at it. I do also want to elaborate a little bit in regards to the differentiation between the full street closure, partial street closure, and some other pieces. As we're going through this process, we realized that some events, although they wanted to be able to utilize the entire full street closure, it, it wasn't advantageous of their event and/or cost, it was, it was kind of cost prohibitive. So some of the events, we had actually worked with the organizers to, to sort of downsize and kind of either put them in a parking lot or perhaps a smaller type of closure where there was around, around the triangle, which we will definitely, once approved within their permit, go ahead and provide more marketing and communication to the public and our local businesses. One in particular is everyone's asking around, you know, Golden History Days and the wagon train. We are still working with them. Is it a procession or a rolling, a rolling closure that's not fully impacting? Potentially, there are some nuances to those pieces that we definitely want to be able to work with them on. The, the other component that I think maybe I hadn't made clear initially when we started to put this entire process together, the permission to close the full street from Sacramento to Bedford is at the purview of city council. And so this is not necessarily the last stop to the approval. This is kind of the permission to go ahead and process some of those permits. Now, I do want to be very, very clear that although I'm not happy to do it, it's very responsible as the director who is issuing the permit that each individual organizer and each individual event is, yes, solely responsible, not only for their costs, but also those regulations. And so although you are providing the permission to, to utilize downtown, if they, if an event organizer, and I've shared this many times with a few of the event organizers, if they are unable to meet whatever regulations that we had adopted previously, unfortunately, you know, it's kind of written in the cards. That's probably the nicest way to say that unfortunately, we may need to either pivot and adjust your kind of, and downsize and not have so many vendors or not do certain things. And we may have to scale it back a little bit. But unfortunately, just because we are receiving city council's permission to utilize downtown Main Street and close it, it does not in any way, shape, or form approve their permit. We are still going to go through the permit process, and we will approve it based on the regulations that you adopted at a previous city council meeting. With that said, a couple of other things that I want to be very, very mindful of, especially when it comes to downtown merchants and some of the economic development pieces that as a community service department, we want to encourage, right? Parks and recreation in my over 20 years is really that component of creating community through people, parks, and programs. And although we may not have a lot of the resources to provide amazing programs, which we do have amazing programs, but we want to add a plethora of them. Some of these events actually do provide certain things that recreation and parks do. The car show is a great example. Golden History Days, great example, right, of certain things that obviously is not only great for economic development, that it does provide a healthy and safe and fun environment for our residents to participate in. So it is very advantageous of us to work with these merchants and to specifically work with some of the organizations directly. So more specifically, are there potential opportunities for revenue sharing in regards to booth space? If there is perhaps larger events that have a greater global impact and bring in revenue from outside of the city? Absolutely. So those are things that staff's looking at, to work with some of these, to work with the organizations downtown to say, hey, look, if you are being able to do these things, we're not going to offset the costs directly from our coffers, but we would like to take a look at what the revenue looks like for this event. Because at that point, if we are sponsoring it, very much like the Hangtown Christmas Parade or other things that we've done in the past, are there revenue-sharing opportunities that the city would be advantageous of being a part of and work on in agreement specifically for those components? We do have a few of the event organizers in attendance tonight. I'm sure if you have a couple of questions around dates, I don't know whether or not I mixed up Halloween, which is, you know, still on October 31st, I think. So with that said, you have my report. Thank you very much, and I'm available for questions if you have any.
Thank you very much for that report. Do we have any questions for staff? You sure? You sure? Okay, great. We'll open this up for public comment.
Good evening. Thank you for everybody's time, and thank you, Dennis, for all the hard work he's done and, and working with us. My name's Alan Ming. I'm from the Merchants on Main organization. I just joined the board this year. We opened up a shop on Main Street, my wife and I, about a year and a half ago. And part of my role on, with the Merchants on Main board is as the event organizer. So I'm the one kind of leading Oktoberfest and Block Party this year. And I just wanted to add a couple of things. I know last year, things didn't go super smoothly. And this year, the Block Party and Oktoberfest is being run by the Merchants on Main organization with volunteers from the Merchants on Main Street. And these, both of these events are going to be really focused on community, focused on getting people back to Main Street. We hear constantly, I haven't been down here in five years. I haven't been here since COVID. There's so much to offer. And so we want these to be really outreach events to the community, to get them involved, not be afraid to come down to these events because of parking issues or too many tourists. We really want to focus on supporting the merchants. So we want these events to be, to have activities that are focused on getting people into the shops, spending money in, in the retail shops, working with the restaurants and the wineries to get people to go into those businesses versus just standing out on the street, listening to music and getting drunk all day. We are working with the nonprofits to try to get some of the nonprofits, I know it sounds great, but you know, it doesn't help the businesses, right? We're reaching out to the nonprofits to get the nonprofits engaged in participating in the events as well. And we also want our role to work with the other event organizers to see where the Merchants on Main group can really backfill and ensure that all the events on Main Street are, again, focused on community and really focused on benefiting the merchants. We've heard a lot of, I've personally heard a lot of feedback from a lot of merchants that say, the street closures don't do me any favors. We want to change that. We really want the events to support all the different merchants down there. One of the examples that I know staff's looking into that I just want to mention real quick is an entertainment zone. So we're hoping maybe by 2026, we can look at getting an entertainment zone, which allows people to go into the restaurants, the bars, the wineries, purchase an alcohol, and come back out on the street with that drink versus bringing in outside beer vendors and outside wine vendors. So those are the kind of efforts we're looking at to really make these events successful for the community and for the Merchants on Main. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Anyone else?
Greg Rezak, Plasterville Antiques, Merchants on Main and Golden History Association. I'd like to respond to the car show if I could. I, I mentioned this before, I love the car show. I absolutely love it. I was wondering if it's possible to put the car show between Bedford and Cedar Ravine and use the parking lots down there too for their display instead of blocking in front of the, the stores. Like I say, I love it, and it's, I would like to see an extension of Main Street so we can promote it to the merchants. Instead of just going outside and we're blocked, people on the sidewalk, on the lawn chairs. And the sales were horrible, honestly, the last time we had it. But they oversold it too, from what I understand. So that was kind of a mess. But again, I love it. I'd like to see an extension of it. I'd love to promote it, and I'd really like to see it down at this end. Alan puts together third Saturday events on Main Street. He has come up with a scavenger hunt for the families, and nighttime is wine and. He has come up with a scavenger hunt for the families, and nighttime is wine and...
After hours.
After hours, after-hours events every third Saturday. So we're trying to encourage any other events that can tie in with us on a third Saturday would be great. We'd love to promote it and extend it. As far as Golden History, we came in late on the wagon train with the funds and all that because the process was kind of grueling this time, but we're good for next year. So what we have planned, if we're going to have in front of the bell tower, we're going to have living history and carnival games in front of the bell tower, and we're encouraging everybody to dress up. I want wagon train to, as soon as they turn the corner, I want this to be gold rush, the whole damn town, merchants and all. We have actors coming in, we have historians, reenactors. It's going to be pretty full street. So just let you know, that's what we have planned this year. So that's it.
What's the date for wagon train?
June 7.
June 7. Thank you.
Yeah, wagon train always falls the second Saturday. So Ruth Michelson, a couple questions, comments. Thank you very much for your efforts, Dennis. I know you put a lot of time into this. So what I'm curious about, having read the staff report, is I'd like to know about, so there was 15 applications, and eight of them were for full street closures, but I'm really curious about the seven that were partial. The reason being, being a merchant. I don't know what's going on, so I'm curious if that will be coming forward and be made public, what those other seven are, that are just bell tower or parking lot or whatever they are, but not street, full street closures. Okay, that was number one. Number two, car show. I have a pretty long memory, maybe you do, too. Last time we had it on the street, all heck broke loose, and as whoever said it, they overcommitted. It got to be a cluster. You could not get an emergency vehicle through, and you may remember the $1,400 of fees that they were assessed and went to court, blah, blah. So then they huffed off and went to the fairgrounds. Now they want to come back. I might not have the details, maybe Cleve knows it better, but anyway. I really support what Greg says. Put them down there. They clog up the sidewalks with their coolers, their lawn chairs. It's terrible for business. They love our cute quaint backdrop, but they do nothing for us. They don't go into the restaurants, they don't go into the shops, and the people coming to the show don't really either. They're there to see the cars. So put them down there. Please consider that. And I want to, let's see, quick, quick. When PDA, back in the day, was in charge of all these events, PDA put out a postcard so that only merchants would know what the heck's going on, but customers, they give it to the customers, and they could plan ahead. So it would be really nice, once the dust has settled on all this, to have a postcard put out by the city and not only mentioning these street closure events, but what other these mystery seven ones are that have applied, as well as, it'd be a courtesy to also do, like the art and wine that we do in November on the third Saturday, Girls' Night Out, which is not going through the city, they're doing their own thing. The third Saturday event that now Alan is in charge of, I was for three and a half years, but I've passed the baton, farmer's market, et cetera. So that would be great if the city would do that. In my last few seconds, I just want to point out, the three events that you're paying for, that $6,000 that you're waiving or paying, the city is paying for, Trick or Treat, Hometown Holidays, Hangtown Christmas, two of the three are religiously based. The ACLU has written you letters about that. I'd review those letters. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
I am really glad to see us finally getting a handle on this. For years, it has been just this disorganized mess that you never knew what was going on, and sometimes in some months, three out of four weeks would have closures on Main Street. So I'm really glad to see this getting some organization to it. I also would like to see the car shows move up the street or off to the fairgrounds. I really found them to be not that much fun on Main Street itself. The cars are neat, but trying to get around through all the mess that they create wasn't much fun, so that's my opinion.
Thank you, Sue. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you, Sue. Go.
Leo Benikoshon, grandfather of Placerville residents. I'm referencing the strategic plan that is in the staff report, and it states that one of the purposes of these guidelines is to support Placerville as a place for economic vitality and a vibrant lifestyle that respects Placerville's historic identity. This has been a long and arduous process. It started with Golden History last year. Not going to go there. Anybody can ask me if you want to know history, but I'm speaking to you as someone who attends Highway 50 organization meetings, who has ridden the wagon train, and the first year, when I wrote it, it was a constant lobbying activity explaining that Placerville loves you, because there were a lot of rumors, for those that were here then, that Placerville didn't love them. And you're in competition, I hate to say, for love with Lake, South Lake Tahoe and Pollock Pines, where I live now, all of whom have great celebrations. So there's a whole bunch of reasons why this is, in my opinion, being downsized. I'm hearing that there's a cost prohibitive piece and that there will be a celebration, and we hope to fill the street. But to truly fill the street, I hope you can figure out, as was said by your great park and rec director, you know, it's still a work in progress, and I think you could do like a half hour or something, because I know the wagon train appreciates coming through and feeling a party atmosphere. And I want you to think about, how can we go back to that? So you have three stars here, and I'm repeating myself. The wagon train has been here for 75 years, going through Placerville. It's the only event that is a partnership with Rolling History that goes through two states, that gave money back to all the communities the first 25 years. And from my perspective, history's important, and history starts with kids, and you're going to bring kids for Trick and Treat? They'll be here for the holidays and the Christmas parade. That's all great, but there's no history. And I urge you to support what's going on with Golden History, support the wagon train by bringing back a true, to borrow a phrase from the first thing, block party on wagon train day. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo.
Hi. I'm Loretta Rezak from Placerville Antiques, and my husband and I are doing the wagon train here downtown. Just want to let you know, our experience in the store, we get so many people coming from all over, including different countries, and they walk, drive by, and they just stop here, and they ask, what is this? What town is this? And I tell them, this is where you go west, young man, go get the gold, this is the town where it started. And they get involved, and they ask questions, and now they're excited, and they go around and look. And, you know, we're always pointing and telling them different historical spots in this town. And I think this, we've been bringing up the historical event, and they're excited to hear about that. And I think just, you know, all of us working as partners in this event will be helpful for us merchants and exposing the culture here in our town. I even tell teachers, bring your kids on this day, your students. They don't know about the history where they live, and they really need to know. But I just wanted to share that with you and let you know how important this is, and hopefully we can all work together and get something going. That's it.
Thank you, Loretta. Anyone else?
This is Mike Otchnochik. I'm the Placerville Lions president, and I just want to clarify some things about our car show. First of all, I agree wholeheartedly with the fact that the last show on, in 2023 was a mess. Quite honestly, that we sold 165 registrations, and we had 40 cars show up the day of the show unregistered. And the problem, and the reason why I've talked to Dennis about doing it on a Sunday is so we have more control over those people that are showing up at the show unregistered. Second of all, the point I want to make is that all the money that our Placerville Lions club generates from these car shows goes back to the community. It goes into our community fund, and is used for supporting the park or the Recreation and Parks Department and other various things in the community. We're helping people like the Upper Room with giving them a break with serving food. The other thing I want to clarify completely, we were not in a snit about downtown. We moved to the fairgrounds for one reason. Our club celebrated 100 years in Placerville. We wanted to put on a carnival-type environment for kids to understand what Lions do and what we mean to the community. So it was an opportunity for us to do a car show, to draw people out, and at the same time, put up bounce houses and all that stuff in an area where kids could be safe.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Okay, well, let's bring it back. What's the pleasure of the council? Or do you have any questions, comments? And then what's the pleasure of the council?
I'll move staff recommendations with the updated dates and primary contacts that were provided here at the meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. One thing before we take the vote, I do agree, and I talked to Mike about this. When we run these events, you got to turn to the folks that you're talking, you know, the guys bringing the cars and everything else. Turn around, go in one of the stores, buy something. Buy something. It's easy. Buy some food, buy a trinket, buy a shirt, whatever the heck it is. We got to drive that home. Every time we have an event like this, and I don't care who the heck you're bringing into town, turn around and, 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 and support the merchants down there. Some do well during these things, some don't. And that's been a reality ever since I've lived in this town. And as to the, whether or not we like the wagon train or not, we love the wagon train. And honestly, if it hadn't been for at least two members of this council last year, there would have been quite a few, fewer wagons in the wagon train. So I would like to get some credit for at least doing my part for the wagon train last year. But that's just my own personal feelings about it, and it's not important right now.
So we have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll?
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye. Thank you. Always do that. 12.4. Consider adopting a resolution establishing requirements for a private sewer lateral compliance real estate transfer disclosure statement and approving the standardized disclosure form pursuant to Chapter 7-17 of the Placerville City Code. Anyway, who is this? Mr. Cahill?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. What we have here is a, you know, a proposal, a resolution to establish a standardized disclosure process, ensuring buyers, you know...
Excuse me, excuse me.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Cool. Okay, thank you. You may proceed.
There was so much excitement, and now we're onto a crappy subject. So this is to establish a disclosure process. We already have a requirement in your city ordinance for a, that at the time of a property sale, that a certificate of lateral compliance be obtained from the city. And this will set up a standardized process to ensure that that certificate is obtained or that the buyer at least goes into a real estate transaction fully aware of their right to, to a sewer inspection, and then they can negotiate any repairs with the buyer or just have that all done before the sale closes. So that's pretty much it. We, we worked with, on the, the actual disclosure statement that's attached to the staff report, we did work with the El Dorado County Association of Realtors and the Government Affairs Committee. There she is, Kimberly Beal. And, you know, their committee reviewed our proposed disclosure statement. They made some requested revisions, and we agreed to those. We see this as a win-win. It's something that, you know, the Realtors Association has asked for. It's something that would help the city achieve a more uniform compliance with the COLC certificate. And, because right now, it's kind of an ad hoc process. So the staff looks through Zillow or real estate publications to see what's on sale, and then makes an effort to let them know they need to get this. So that, that's pretty, again, it's ad hoc, it's not all that efficient. But this would, you know, again, with the help of the Realtors, we'd have a formal process in place for this. So that's, that's pretty much it. Happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions, comments? I have a question. How about transactions that are private transactions that don't go through a real tour?
Well, it's still...
I mean, they have to comply, but I'm just saying, how does that information, would that be at the title company?
Yeah, I don't know. That's, I mean, it's going to be advertised.
Okay.
We might catch it. The disclosure statement is still a requirement, but, but it is, I mean, it could happen.
Okay. I guess it's something that needs to be thought about. Okay. Just a question. All right. We'll open up public comment.
Good evening. Kimberly Beal, Government Affairs Director for the El Dorado County Association of Realtors for the last 25 years, and I'm a real estate broker myself, and I've been licensed since 1978. The El Dorado County Association of Realtors has 1,100 members. In part, our association's mission statement is to support its members through information, education, products, and services, and our vision statement is to enhance professional standards of real estate by promoting an environment where members can achieve an exemplary level of professionalism and integrity while contributing to the community and serving our clients. My request to establish the requirement for real estate transfer disclosure statement is at behalf of the Board of Directors and all of our members. When a Realtor enters into a listing agreement with the seller of a property, we discuss our role as an agent, and we provide the various disclosure documents that are required by law, whether that be national, state, or local law. In the form of our local regulations, El Dorado County has had three different disclosure documents that they've required. One was just repealed due to a state regulation that overruled it. The other two are still in place, and they talk about health and safety issues like this is relating to agricultural matters and naturally occurring asbestos. I understand the city has mailed notices to property owners that are served by the city sewer system to inform them about the PSLC ordinance and its point-of-sale mandate. And I've been told of other outreach programs that the city has taken trying to inform property owners of their duties when they sell the property. However, not all sellers always remember the laws and pass notices that affect their property. And when the seller's property is being managed by a family member due to seller's diminished capacity or even upon their death, that family member not be aware of your private sewer lateral compliance ordinance. Additionally, a trustee overseeing the property and even lenders who are foreclosed on a property, they're not going to know of the regulation either. By adopting the requirement for the real estate transfer disclosure statement, our Association of Realtors will educate our members and, and make, make sure that they understand the importance of complying with the regulation and educating even the sellers upon it. We will post it to our website, along with the ordinance as well, and we will do outreach to our own members. All Realtors that are licensed in California are members of the National Association of Realtors, California Association of Realtors, and our local associations. My association... My association goes up to Equasumet, and then there's another association in the South Lake Tahoe. All the disclosures are paid, placed on our local association website when they're adopted within our jurisdiction. We haven't had one yet for the city, but we've had them for, since two thousand and three due to county adopted disclosure requirements. Furthermore, for those disclosures that are required by federal law or state law, we know to go to the California Association's website where we found, find all of them. We can pull them and you, print them and use those documents to work with our buyers and sellers. So this is just a continuation of what the practice is that is standard. So our public, the public can also look at our website. It's not just a membership-only viewing point. Anybody can go in and look at it. And we do have a lot of property owners who are thinking about a for-by, for sale-by owner, who will even reach out and contact our association about they might need to do to pursue that. We refer them to our website for information. We don't advise on that at all, and just recommend if they want to learn more, they might want to contact an agent. So out-of-area agents, for sale-by owners, those people also will have access to this information on our website. I firmly believe that coming up with compliance, the sellers for compliance will be easier and more widely accommodated if you do adopt this disclosure so that the real estate industry will know of this and can expose it to the public. Do you have any questions?
Do we have any questions? That was very thorough. Just mine, but I think you explained it. This'll, this information will be out there, and I'm, I sold real estate a million years ago.
I remember.
Yeah. Um, you never know what that means, but I'm gonna take it as a positive. But the, the title companies, they're, they're, like, they go to all the meetings, they're all involved. So the title companies will...
No.
No, they won't.
No, they are not involved in disclosure documents. The only time they will get involved is if a, a Realtor representing the buyer or the seller says, "Oh, Title Officer, as you are..."
Right.
"...have them sign their closing documents, would you also have them sign this disclosure that they forgot to sign?" They will not say anything about it, they'll just...
Oh, no, right.
...in front of them.
Oh, yeah.
And say, "Your Realtor asked that you sign this."
Right.
The title company has no obligation to do so.
Okay, okay. I mean, I think that's what I meant. It would, if it got into the mix at the title company, then they would be there. Yeah, they're not gonna comment on it, and you just put it in front of you, you'd sign it. Okay. All right. Well, it's a work in progress. I'm sure we'll learn many things as this goes forward, so. Anyway, that was my only question. Were there any other? Yeah? Okay.
I just had one. I was gonna, I actually, I spoke to a Realtor, and I also, also spoke to Ms. Beal about this, um, just the addition, a possible addition to this disclosure under item number three. Just, the, the feedback I got was that it would be nice to have another checkbox that just says "other," because there are situations that can come up in a real estate transaction that do not fall within one of these four categories. And so just to have the option, and Ms. Beal was, was, um, she said that that would be fine, and she was actually okay with it, but if you guys are okay with adding that, um, that fifth box that just says "other," and that allows the Realtor to do their job and kind of, um, talk about strange situations that otherwise are not addressed by this document.
And what would they be? I'm curious now.
Uh, it could, I mean, a million things could happen that would, that would fall in the "other" category.
Can I get staff's, uh, opinion on that?
Yeah. Great. Can you comment on that?
Just asking if the building official has any comment on that.
Yes.
I don't necessarily see any problem with adding it.
No, no, I, no, "other" is fairly...
And it may never get used, but just gives, it gives an agent an option to address a strange situation that is not addressed currently in this, in these four checkboxes.
That's under item number three?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, there could be exceptions.
What, what would they be? I'm curious now.
Well, one, one that we, I'm, I'll let you address it, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
If you're on a pump system, we do have an exception in the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
We call it the Bush Court exception.
Okay.
Or if the...
I mean, I know what you're talking about now, okay. Yeah, I remember that.
Or, or if the, if they negotiate during the contract that the buyer is willing to cover the cost of the repairs, our current ordinance doesn't address that, and so that might be some, you know, there's, there's certain things that could come up in a contract that would just be nice to have...
Right, right.
...addressed, and then...
So if the buyer covers the cost, I mean, we still, I mean, all, I mean, I guess, whoever pays, who pays for it is irrelevant.
Correct.
As long as it gets paid for, and it gets done.
Yeah.
You know, that's really the bottom line, is we want the thing to get done, and this is a way to bring that to everybody's attention and to get the thing done. So as long as those other considerations don't impede that happening, then I'm, I'm fine with it, and "other" is fine, I don't see a problem with it.
Yeah, that's good feedback, because there are exceptions.
Yeah.
And they could request an extension.
Okay.
Could close escrow.
That's fine. Okay, no, that's fine, that's fine. As long as we get the deed done, I don't, you know, yeah.
This is, this is gonna cover ninety-nine percent.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand, yeah. We don't wanna, we don't wanna sacrifice it. Okay, great. That it?
That's it.
Anything down here?
No, with the "other," we'll just have a line for an explanation.
Yeah, I assume, yeah, yeah, I would say "other" with a line to explain why you, like, we are on Bush Court.
Yes.
Yeah, just an explanation with "other."
They'll just write "Bush Court."
I have a sewer lifter system, 'cause I'm below grade, and so my, it's, I, I'm never gonna be able to sell my house now because I'm gonna pass one of these C O L Cs. But anyway, so there are weird situations out there.
I'm sorry.
I love my house, it's a good thing.
Okay, good. Other, okay. So, uh, do I motion to pass it with "other"? Oh, I'm sorry, is there public comment on this?
Public comment.
All right, yeah. Sorry, Sue, I got public comment.
Well, we have more public comments.
We have more public comments.
Yeah, this has been out since November of last year, and it's actually worked out very well.
Okay.
It was like pulling teeth to get it through. John, you remember?
Oh, I know.
And Councilmember Yarborough, I greatly appreciate the language you added in there as far as your portion. They get, that gave us some discretion. The, the issues we're having is when title is transferred, a new property owner comes in, and they claim they don't have their certificate of lateral compliance, and we issue them...
Right, right, yeah.
So this is gonna cover that.
Yes.
It's greatly gonna help us.
No, oh, no, this, I'm, no one's arguing the, the value of this, I'm, yeah, no.
And seventy-five percent are passing.
Well, good.
Yeah.
Well, that, I, I am surprised. Well, especially in this town.
Sue Rodman, Member of Measure H, Measure L, and so we're acquainted with some of our sewer and water problems in Placerville than some of the rest of the people. And I think this is absolutely great. This is something we really need. This protects you when you buy a property so that you know that your sewer system is okay. And if it's not, you know what is gonna have to be happening. So I, yes, we need to do this.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? All right. We'll bring it back here. What's the pleasure of the council?
I will move stack recommendation with the addition of a checkbox with "other" and a line at the bottom under item three.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Vote.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gotberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Thank you. Consider advertising plans, this is item twelve point five. Consider advertising plan specifications and contract document for bidding for phase one of the construction of the Thompson Way repaving project and the Sherman Street repaving project. Ms. Savage?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thompson Way, Sheridan Street, and Sherman Way were identified as priority paving projects due to the low pavement condition index associated with each street. The projects also include the repair and replacement of city sewer remains, water system maintenance and replacement, and storm drain system repair and replacement. In May of two thousand and twenty-four, the city council approved a consulting services agreement with Rook Engineering to begin the design phase of the three projects. They completed a comprehensive evaluation of the underground utilities for all three projects and provided recommendations for repair, replacement, and maintenance of the city-owned utilities. Given the location of Sierra Elementary School within the project limits, staff has been coordinating with the Placerville Union School District, and we have agreed that construction activities should largely only take place during summer break before, between the first week of June and the first week of August. Based on the number of working days associated with construction, the city will not have enough time this year to complete the entire project during one summer break. As staff, as such, staff has made the decision to phase the project. The utility work will be completed under phase one in the summer of two thousand and twenty-five, and all three roads will be paved under phase two in the summer of twenty-six. Sheridan Street has no underground utility work, so it is not included in phase one. Additionally, during the design phase, staff discovered that Sierra Elementary School sits on a very large parcel, and it currently does not contain a public street right-of-way for Thompson Way. We evaluated this in detail and performed a thorough review of the mapping history. Old parcel maps indicated the intent of a public street through the parcel, but a formal easement was never established. But for all intents and purposes, the road has been used by the public as a public local street which connects between an arterial Cedar Ravine Road and a collector street, Washington Street. Staff met with the school district, and we discussed this matter, and they have agreed to grant a road and utility easement for Thompson Way. This work will be completed prior to performing the paving in the summer of two thousand and twenty-six. Right now, a small portion of the city sewer main within the pavement on Thompson Way is located on the school's parcel, so staff has obtained a signed permit to enter and construct from the school district, allowing the city to perform the work on the sewer main. Ultimately, the sewer main will be located within the new easement. Draft construction bid documents for phase one of Thompson Way and Sherman Street are complete, and staff is respectfully requesting authorization to release the bid documents for public bidding. Those separate C I P projects, staff intends to advertise the projects and deliver one construction, or sorry, and award one construction contract for both projects. The design of phase two of all three projects will proceed to prepare for construction in the summer of two thousand and twenty-six. And I did want to mention, I know the issue of right-of-way has come up on a lot of projects recently, and I've mentioned this before, but the right-of-way analysis and outcome will be different in many cases. Sometimes we will determine that something is or needs to officially be a city street, and sometimes we will not. Our right-of-way mapping in city records are very challenging, to say the least, and it does require some additional time and effort to figure out the best path forward, but we will continue to do so on all projects. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
We live in an interesting town. Um, do we have any questions for staff? Fairly straightforward. Public comment, please.
Sue Rodman, one again. This, I think, has been, our engineering department has done an excellent job to research this and figure out the best ways to do these. These streets are in terrible shape. The project needs to really be done, and the fact that we are now looking at all the underground utilities first so that we don't end up with a brand-new street and have to tear it up because the water liner, the sewer line fails underneath it. So this is, I mean, this is the, this is the best possible way to do these things, is to do the underground utilities first. And in the limited time of summer break, this is a great way to do this project, and I think that we are very fortunate as a city to have the engineering staff that we have.
Agreed. Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? Okay. Bring it back. What's the pleasure?
Make a motion to approve the item.
I'll second.
We have a motion, second.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gotberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, twelve point six. Consider ratifying construction contract change orders number twenty-two through number twenty-eight in the total aggregate amount of minus three hundred and eighty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty cents with Doug Verikap, General Engineering, Inc., for the Broadway maintenance project from Mosquito Road to Schnell School Roads. Approve, approving amendment number one to agreement for engineering services in the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand ninety-six dollars and fifty-two cents with Duberry Engineers, Inc., and authorizing, authorizing the city manager to execute the same, authorizing the city engineer to execute a notice of completion. Yay! And authorizing the assistant city manager slash director of finance to release remaining retention for the said project. Ms. Savage?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. That's a lot of information. I'll give you a really quick abbreviated version. So we had a lot of project savings, thankfully, due to excellent construction management on this project. However, the construction management services that were needed were a lot compared to their original contract amount. But I really do have to give credit where credit is due, and Dion Carr with Duberry Engineers, who was the resident engineer on both projects, really scrutinized project costs and additional work, and really endlessly advocated on behalf of the city. And so it was a really challenging job for them to manage both construction contracts at the same time, but he did a fantastic job. With my current workload, I really have to rely on them to do that negotiating for me, and Dion really does a great job. So even though their amendment was a lot, it was absolutely worth it, and I only can sing praises for them. Additionally, a big part of the additional work was adding broadband very late in the design of the project. Originally, Duberry's contract did not have any construction management services associated with the broadband design, and we had to redesign all of the broadband that was installed during construction, and the construction management team, um, did all of that. They attended meetings, and then they also provided the as-bills that we're gonna use to build our city's G I S system, um, mapping system of the broadband services. So that's pretty much it. Again, I just want to thank the public. This project was awesome. I think the outcome was amazing, and it was a lot of work to get there, but that's it. Thank you for, if you have any questions, let me know.
Do we have any questions? Does anybody want to heap praise on staff and everyone about this project? Because I do. So if you want to now, or we'll wait for Sue to comment, because I know she will, uh, on this project. So why don't we hand it to Sue and then come back?
As your last public, Pearson Hughes, still here? Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Good. Thanks.
It's nice not to be the only one here. Yes, this has been an amazing project, and I, I notice, and not just this project, but a lot of our projects, the only contractor who ever gives us money back is Verikap. He's the only one who figures out how to do things that save the city money and actually refund some money to us. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Um, all right, we'll bring it back here. Heap praise, go.
Yes, thank you so much. Super exciting, so glad this project, uh, we finally got it done. Big community benefit, and with that, I'll make a motion to approve this item.
I will second it, and I will, I'll also congratulate you, it's a huge project, and it looks great, so, yeah, well done.
You know, with the new road and the new gross out and everything that's up there, exciting things on Broadway, very much so. This is a whole renaissance up there. Anyway, all right, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gotberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Item twelve point seven, this seems somewhat anticlimactic, but why not? Consider ratifying construction contract change order number twenty through twenty-four with Doug Verikap, General Engineering, Inc., in the total combined amount of minus, again, minus one hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents for the Broadway sidewalks project. Approving amendment number one to agreement for engineering services in an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-two cents with Duberry Engineers, Inc., and authorizing the city manager to execute the same, authorizing the city engineer to execute a notice of completion, and authorizing the city, the
to execute a notice of completion, and authorizing the city, the assistant city manager, director of finance, to release remaining retention for the said project. Yay. Ms. Savage?
Thanks again, Mayor and council members. Same story, different projects, same project limits. And so this one, much smaller contract, the change orders did end up in a deductive amount, smaller amount, but still really wonderful. They kept everything done very efficiently. And then we have an amendment for Duberry Engineers. And that's all I have to report on that. So, thank you.
Are there any questions? Are there any comments? Thank you. Okay, bring it back up here.
I'll make a motion to approve 12.7.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Nell?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gotberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clariachi?
Aye. Thank you. 12.8, consider retroactively approving and affirming a salary schedule effective January 4th, 2025 with the International Union of Operating Engineers and regular non-sworn positions within the confidential employee unit, executive management employee unit, and the supervisory employee unit. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this is a routine item that your meeting held on March 11th. The city council ratified the tentative agreement with Local 39, as you stated, in closed session, and the city attorney reported out the tentative agreement in open session that same evening. The tentative agreement with Local 39 includes a 2% cost of living adjustment that became effective January 4th of this year, retroactively. The city has a longstanding past practice for providing the same salary and benefit provisions provided to employees represented by Local 39 to regular, non-sworn, unrepresented employees in the confidential unit, executive management unit, and the supervisory unit. Accordingly, staff recommends that the 2% COLA be applied to all regular, unrepresented, non-sworn employee salaries. If approved, the salaries for the positions highlighted in yellow on the new salary schedule will be adjusted accordingly. The salaries for all other positions will remain the same. The projected cost of the 2% COLA mentioned about, or mentioned earlier, which is included in the new salary schedule, totals $63,154 for this fiscal year, 2425. The adopted budget for 2425 did not include the $63,000 cost. However, the city experienced savings in employee medical insurance benefits and personal savings from vacant positions that have effectuated budget savings to offset this cost. So with that, staff respectfully requests the city council to approve the resolution as presented.
All right, seems all very straightforward. Do we have any questions here? Okay, any comments? Would someone like to move this item?
I'll move. Item 12.8.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Nell?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gotberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clariachi?
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, council reports from other agencies. Go. Eldorado County Transit?
We meet next week.
Eldorado County Transportation Commission?
Didn't meet.
LAFCO?
We meet tomorrow.
SAICOG, we met in the city of Rockland last week. Rockland is a beautiful town, and I'm sure lots of people like living there. From what I can tell, it looks like a giant shopping center with some houses put into it. It's 77,000 people, and I got to tell you, they have every food group of sales tax generator you want, and they're having budget problems, which I sat there and I heard that, I just went, whoa. They also have, oh, the junior college, Sierra Junior College. We got a presentation from them. From what those folks are doing, it's amazing. What they are doing with education and with the younger kids and the community and jobs is amazing. Just, it was incredible. Otherwise, it was, it was a SAICOG meeting and, you know, whatever. There wasn't anything else. It's kind of in the doldrums right now, so, on SAICOG's part. They are going to come and do a presentation to us about the blueprint at some point. At some point, they're going to come and do that. So let's not get too excited. All right, Pioneer Community Energy Board?
We did meet. Only one real item of interest. There is a new program coming up that I thought was kind of cool. It's a really old technology that's coming back. It's been utilized for about the last 10 years in commercial buildings down in Southern California. They've adapted it for residential. It's essentially a giant cooler with coils that utilizes the existing compressor in your air conditioner to freeze water during, programming it, either if you have, if you have solar, you can set it to freeze your water first thing in the morning when you have solar power. If you don't, overnight when power is cheaper. And then that ice runs your air conditioner through the entirety of the rest of the day, so your compressor does not run during the hot period of the day, extending the life of your system. Obviously, huge cost savings. So they're going to try to get this thing rolled out before the summer. It's, it's, yeah, probably not going to happen. But they're hoping to have this rolled out before summer. And they're going to attach it to their AC servicing program that they have now, and if they think it's appropriate for you, they'll recommend it. And it's going to be on a really reasonable payment plan, so no upfront costs. So look for that coming out soon. Other than that, it was a pretty boring meeting.
Okay, well, that's very exciting. I'm intrigued. Placerville Fire Safety Council?
We did not meet, but a reminder, our event is on April 26 from 10 to 2 at Midtown Mall. Please come.
Opportunity knocks.
We did not meet.
Okay. Are there any requests? Do we have to take public comment? Does anybody want to comment on all the meetings we didn't go to, actually? Great. I'd been worried, I'd have been worried about you. Okay, item 14, request for future agenda items. Are there any?
Request to bring back something about the third floor parking issue.
Yeah, you know, yeah, I think there's a bigger discussion there because we're having the new, we're redoing the machines, you know, we're getting an upgrade on the machines. And of course, everybody left, so I can say this and not get attacked. You know, we've been charging two bucks for a while now, and we need to look at our budget, and we need to look at other things. We need to look at the parking structure. I wouldn't make that face over there. We need to look at a lot of things. So maybe not just the third floor. I mean, the third floor is something we can talk about relatively quickly, but we should probably talk about the whole parking district and the budget and la di da. So at some point, and relatively soon. When do the new machines get here?
Most likely the middle to end of May.
Okay, all right, all right. Yeah, we need to really, yeah, we need to think about that. All right. Okay. And then on the third floor thing, I don't know, bring something back. I don't.
Do you want that as part of the entire study, or do you want?
You know, I think the third party thing is kind of, I hate to say it, because it's a little of a squeaky wheel thing. So maybe we could just talk about, because that's really something different from the whole parking milieu, you know. Just the third floor thing is probably, it could be its own thing, I think.
So, Mayor, you know, also, there was a group that meets on a regular basis, and they brought up this parking issue also, and that was one of the issues they brought up.
Yes, I know. They stopped inviting.
As well as a couple of other items. We scheduled a meeting to meet with them, the city engineer and I, and nobody showed up. And then we asked them again, would you like to meet with us, reschedule and meet? They said we didn't confirm the first meeting, when in fact, we did. We saw the email. But anyway, so, and they haven't replied to our request if we want to meet again with them. So just kind of a separate issue, but another piece of information on that. But yeah, if you would like us to bring, look at the third floor. What I would really like to do, though, is back in 2014, Dave?
18.
18, was it? We actually did a survey where we
Oh, yeah, you guys did.
For two weeks, we went and counted every two hours or something like that about. And we found that there was no deficit of parking. Now, yes, in, you know, on the day after Thanksgiving, yeah, on the day of the parade and the day of, you know, the street lighting, yes, there are parking issues. And there are some other times when it gets very busy. We recognize that. The question is, how much do you expand parking for those four or five times a year? So those are the issues that you should look at when you look at that. Obviously, you heard the thing, you don't want to, you know, turn your, your city into a parking lot and then ruin that. But, but yeah, we can look at that. I don't completely disagree, and that may be something we could look at in terms of, you know, designating a space for leased parking on Saturdays and Sundays. And because a lot of the space up there are our city employees also.
Right.
So we generally, most of them are not there on, on a weekend.
Yeah, just there's a bigger discussion around that whole process, and then if we can free up something, you know, yeah, we, yeah. But yeah, bring us something.
All right, we'll take a look at it.
Let's talk about that.
I'm happy to have future discussions on parking, third floor and global.
Well, the global parking, that's a money problem, and we're going to have to start dealing with it real quick here.
You're just going to scare our engineering department into thinking we're going to build a new parking garage.
You know, anyway, yes, okay, that's it. Any others? Any other things right now? Okay, great. City manager and staff reports. Lightning round, let's go. 15.1, police report.
We are, there's a new software update for Citizen RIMS, which is adding more information. Citizen RIMS is the module of our RIMS system that the public has direct access to for very granular statistics and calls for service. So if you ever wonder what happened over there, you just click on the icon, and it'll bring up the call for service that is authorized to be released by legislation. So look for that. What we give you is just a glimpse. Like I said, when I pull stats, if I do it for one month, I get 91 pages of statistics for the organization. So the byproduct of that is, it is showing us where our inefficiencies are as far as resource deployment. That's why we're able to get our calls for service, priority one response times down so low. We're finding problems in the chain and correcting those problems so we can deliver officers to the source of a call in the most expedient amount of time. So I mean, you're getting a lot of times where officers are showing up while the RP is still on the phone, giving the details of the call. So we're very happy about that.
Cool. Well, thank you. I hear there's a rogue taco van driving around town and parking spots.
That's, that's the first time I've heard of it, but it sounds awesome, I'll be honest. I come from Modesto, so it's like, yeah.
They like to set up over on, at the mosquito place there.
Those, those mobile vendors are normally, the enforcement is done through the county on, on that stuff. We will obviously facilitate any, any kind of corrective action needs to be taken. I, I've not seen it, but.
Yeah, it gets like, they put, they have a van in a tent, I guess.
It's like three Easy Ups.
Yeah. And they're not, I mean, they obviously don't, they're not permitted.
Where at?
It's in the park and ride at Mosquito. Yeah, there was, there was three Easy Ups, and they had full, like, warming tables out.
Oh, yeah.
It was, it shocked me. It was quite the restaurant.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. Give us a call. We'll, we'll come and
Try not to bother you.
Make that
If you see it, though, if you would.
Yeah, I've only seen it once, but I
Send me a quick text, and I'll
I was so shocked when I saw it. I was like, I just, I'll make it happen.
You should take some pictures.
I'll make it happen next time I drive by.
From time to time, stuff like that does happen. It's just, it's, we need to educate the person and
And stop them.
Take any enforcement action.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Of course, they'll try to talk.
Uh, Fire Station 25. Okay, great.
I will, Luke came home today. So I know the fire department, it was an emotional day for them. We had, we had the honor of sending officers to Sacramento to bring him home. So it was, it was a, I know it was a long day for our brothers and sisters, the fire department.
Understood, understood. Development Services Department?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I think you saw, I've already seen the one-page memo there. And the bottom line is, February was a productive month, and the bulk of the revenue taken in was for five single-family dwelling permits.
Wow.
You have any other questions? Be happy to answer.
Is it the same person that's going to build five houses, or they're five?
Yeah, that's the Sutter Ridge.
Oh, oh, okay, that's fine. Okay, great. Thank you.
I just have one quick request from Mr. Cahill. If you don't mind, hopefully, I don't think it's on risk, but that certificate of lateral compliance, I was actually going to ask, and then our building official answered earlier, is it possible to put after that number, how many pass or fail?
Oh, yeah.
Just say total eight, six passed, or what, just for our community's information.
About the 75% rating, just
If you don't mind, just adding that quick little stat on that, on that line, that'd be great for our information, I believe.
Mayor, we have, we have one more quick staff report if we can. Ms. McConnell, you want to report that? Not a bad thing.
No, not a bad thing. Just a quick, we wanted to provide a brief mention that we have the city of Placerville 2025 ADA transition plan available for public review starting today, and that will be on the city's website. If you go to it and search ADA, it'll bring up the page where the document is. We also have an online survey, and we are collecting comments until April 23, and then we will be bringing back the final document to council to adopt after that.
Good. Well, thank you for that. Very exciting. Okay. Oh, is there any public comment on the staff reports? No, okay. Upcoming items, you can read those? We are adjourned.